I'm doing great, thank you.
Okay, the appointed time has arrived. It is 3 o'clock on Thursday, August 2, 2018. I will call this work session to order and let the train go by first.
So Amtrak engineer?
Tab A on our agenda is a presentation of our 2017 audit by Malden and Jenkins LLC, James Benz partner. So if y'all want to come forward.
Good afternoon. My name's James Benz with Malden and Jenkins. I'm the engagement partner who worked on the city's audit this year. I believe you guys have the electronic documents and Sarah's passing out our hard copy of our auditor's discussion and analysis. This is the primary document we'll go through. It's our document that kind of summarizes your audit.
Thank you.
You're also getting the hard copies of the actual annual financial report, which is what the city prepares and as the auditors, we come in to audit.
Thank you.
Just, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but just to kind of hit some of the highlights through there. On page two, obviously, the majority of you all see us once a year when we come do our presentation. So this just gives you a little background information about our firm, who we are and what we do. Serving governments is something that we specialize in. We serve about 400 different governments throughout the southeast. Your audit's conducted out of our Atlanta office and out of our Atlanta office, we've got about 40 employees that spend 100% of their time year-round working on government. So it is something that we specialize in and we commit a lot of our resources to. I'm your engagement partner. I've been with the firm for 15 years. Every audit has two partners at a minimum involved. We have an engagement partner and then a quality control partner. The quality control partner just does a very independent, high-level review to make sure that we've done everything the standards require and that your financial statements are materially correct as we've reviewed them. Through the audit process, we do test samples. We don't test 100% of the activity and our objective is to issue an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are materially correct as presented. Our opinion on your 2017 audit was that it is materially correct and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the thumbs up, is the clean opinion that everyone wants to get. So your statements, as you presented them, as the cities presented them, were materially correct as we've tested in accordance with government audit and standards. Going to page six, one of your, I guess really your key operating fund is your general fund and we're just going to go through some of the overall highlights from the year. On page six, you'll see at the bottom, you've got a kind of a pie chart that gives some visual to your revenue sources. And typical to cities your size, you'll see that property taxes and your sales tax are your main sources of income. The following page seven gives you a breakdown of how your general fund expenditures were expended during the year and we look at this to look, to make sure that the way the city's operating is in line with the way other cities your size and that provide similar services work. And as you can see, the key services you provide are your public safety, your public works, and culture and recreation services. And so, you know, the end user can look at this and see that the money that's taken in from the city is being used and put back to the citizens in those key areas. On page eight, it gives you a five-year trend of your revenues and your expenditures in the general fund, just to kind of see how you operate in that area. And you can see, it kind of fluctuates, which is pretty common. You'll have a couple of years where you build your reserves and then a couple of years where you will use them. But overall, you guys operate on a pretty consistent revenues to expenditures margin there. Page nine gives you a little more, it's the same information that's on page eight, but it gives you a little more visual to the gaps or the surpluses between your revenues and expenditures. This shows, you can see, there was three years of consistent growth and then for a couple of years now, you've dipped into the fund balance to balance your operations for a couple of years. Again, an up and down curve in that's not uncommon and not unnerving, but you don't want to see consistent use of the reserves until it dwindles away. So what you're seeing on yours is pretty consistent with the way most governments will see it, an annual swing in things. Page 10, again, just kind of hitting on the fund balance and the expenditures of your general fund. Again, that being the main operating fund for the city, we've got a five-year trend of where your fund balance has been compared to what your annual operations were for the general fund. You can see, we're starting to see a bigger gap between the operations and where the reserves are. And at the bottom, you can see for the last three years, your fund balance to expenditures ratios have gone from about 69% in 2015 to 53.5% in 2017. Knowing you all are looking at the fiscal year change, the key thing to remember when you're looking at this point of view is at December is sort of your cash-rich, your fund balance-rich, the highest point in the year. So when you look at a September year in later, the ratios won't be the same, but it's more of the point in time that you look at a snapshot of where your finances are. At December, you've got enough in reserves to cover half a year of operations. And keep in mind, your income sources, when your revenues come in at the end of a calendar year, they've got to carry you for that next year. So you want to see a pretty healthy fund balance at a 1231 municipality. When you look at like a June or September, you're not as cash-rich, so your ratios are going to be smaller because you're going to see most of your income come in during the property tax season. Looking at page 15, a few of the communications that our standards require that we have with you guys. As part of the audit process, we do review estimates and judgment, management judgments that are involved into your financial statements. We did review those through the audit and we don't see anything, didn't see anything unusual or outside the norm for the industry in the estimates used by management. So that's a good thing. We enjoyed working with your management team. They do a really good job of getting us the information. An audit process, if you've never been through one, is not usually what most people enjoy. We come in and we ask for a bunch of information at the front end. We get in, we start asking more questions and poking, digging in holes and your management team does a good job of working with us and getting us the information. So we're able to come in, do the audit, turn it around and get out without stretching it out over a long period of time. So we appreciate that. We are independent of management. We are independent of the preparation process. Management prepares the financial statements and again, as our responsibility, we come in and audit those financial statements. So they've pulled all the information together, they've put all the numbers in and we've audited what they've provided to us and we, you know, that makes it much easier when they can support all the numbers in the general ledger. So we, through the audit process, we did have a few adjustments. Those have all been posted to your system. They're in your financial statements. They've also been discussed with management, both to understand why the adjustments were posted and to address how to prevent them in future years if it's a recurring issue. Through that, on page 17, we did have a few of the audit adjustments which dealt with the timing of when revenues were recognized. That based on the size of the adjustments, under the standards are required to be reported as what's considered a significant deficiency. That's the terminology of what we used to just call findings and it's set by the dollar threshold of the adjustments. What we have is we had three adjustments that dealt with the timing of when revenues were recognized, not necessarily the fact that they were unreported, but these were items which were reported as revenue in 2018 and should have been reported as revenue in 2017. And we identified those reclasses and so under the standards, those have to be identified as significant deficiencies. But again, it's really just, not to minimize it, but it's the timing of the period that the city was recognizing the revenue versus whether or not it was recognized at all. And so we had a few of those adjustments. There's also an item that relates to, you've got about six funds which didn't have operating budgets that were adopted on an annual basis. Under Georgia law, you're required to either have annually adopted operating budgets or if it's a capital fund, you can have a project length budget that's being adopted. And so there were six funds that either didn't have a budget adopted or didn't have a balanced budget adopted, which the law requires balanced budgets. And so those six funds are cited in here. Easy corrections going forward, just to make sure that they were adopting budgets on those, but those are cited as the non-compliance item in here. Yes, ma'am.
What page?
I'm on 18, I'm sorry. So it was the federal seizures, narcotics enforcement, drug task, two SPOS funds and the debt service fund. At the bottom of 18 and into 19, those are what we consider management points. They're areas where we note that there are availability for improvements, not necessarily things resulting from general injuries, but just areas in the control processes within the city where we've brought to management's attention the opportunity for improvement. On page 20, going for about seven pages, these are all new accounting standards that are coming out in the coming years, some of them as far as three years out. We try to work with management to make sure they're aware of these ahead of time and incorporating and implementing them appropriately, but we also like to provide them to governance. Obviously, things that may or may not be applicable to you now, decisions you all make in the future could change what's relevant and applicable to the city. So we always want to at least present it and make you all aware of those, but do know that we do, we offer training to our clients and we also proactively throughout the year will work with management to make sure they're aware of what's, what new standards are applicable in the coming years and how to implement them appropriately. So there's no surprises on the back end of anything where maybe a new standard slipped through the cracks. So we always try to work proactively to make sure those are known and implemented appropriately. And as I just mentioned, on page 29, one of the things we do for our clients and we've done since about 2005 is we do quarterly training classes that are free to any of our clients to attend. We open it up to management and also to governance, to council and board members. What we do is each quarter, we'll poll the class and see what topics they'd like to teach on and then we try to make the next one or two sessions on those topics. And we do one in the Atlanta area and one in the middle Georgia area and just very hosted at different locations, but again, it's free. We, you know, we started these training sessions back when the economy was rough and we noticed a lot of governments were cutting back on travel and training budgets. So we understand that that's an important piece to management's role, so we started offering these to our clients on a free basis. And it's been, we average about 100 people each quarter, so we've kind of kept it going throughout the years. So if you're ever interested in that, our contact information's on there. If you'll just email us, we can add you to an email list. We send it out each quarter before the class starts to poll for enrollment. So again, that's open to management and governance. With that, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I just want to make a comment before anybody makes any. In all the years that I've been with the city, this is probably the most comprehensive audit document that I've ever seen presented to the city. So thank you for that. Some good information. I love charts, so you've got charts in there, easy to read, so good job. Questions? Comments?
Well, I have a question. I don't recall last year having this conversation about these, these funds that were not, those six funds that weren't balanced and didn't have balanced budgets. Did we have the same issue last year?
I don't think so. I'd have to look back, to be honest.
So in fairness, I'm just now looking at this as you reviewed it. I want to take a little more time. Did you intend to be here Tuesday night?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Is your contact information in here?
Uh, yes, sir.
In case we have more questions. Because I'm sure I'm going to have a few more questions. I'm just briefly skimming through this now, but even in your presentation, you've highlighted a few things that I want more information on. I want to better understand how, let me just review it so that I can be clear about what I'm asking you before I get to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Out of number two, Villarica Master Trail Presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Earlier this year, you approved the city to our department to move forward with planning a master trail plan. After doing a series of community meetings to begin to conceptualize the plan, what we have before you today is the final presentation, you will, of what the consultant has been able to pull together based on public comments and comments that have also come through from our steering committee. I will, for those that aren't aware, we did a presentation to the planning commission on Tuesday night with the recommendation of 501 approval as well. I'm going to turn this over to our consultant. You guys have met them before. It's the Path Foundation with Kaizen Collaborative. So Ed and Greta will continue the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, sir. No, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor and council members, we're honored and privileged to present the trail master plan for you. As you know, I'm with the Path Foundation. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) based in Atlanta and we built the Carrollton Trails and the Silver Comet Trail and the Atlanta Belt Line and a few others, about 280 miles of trails so far. And we, with our team member here, Kaizen Collaborative, Greta D'Amio, we have master planned probably 30 different counties and cities throughout Georgia and a little bit in South Carolina and everything as far as master plans go for trails. So we think we're fairly good at this and we appreciate the opportunity to present for Villarica. So when we are live, alive and well here, I think you know, we had several, we formed a steering committee, we had several steering committee meetings, we also had a big public meeting and we got lots of feedback. I will say that as consultants, we came into your community and we immediately, Greta and I thought Temple Street downtown would make a great pedestrian plaza and a kind of a access for the whole trail system. But we heard from the community at the community meeting and from the mayor and everybody that that wasn't what the city wanted to do. And one of the, one of the traits of a good consultant is to listen to their client. So what you're going to see today, we think is a really good plan that does not include the conversion of Temple Street to a pedestrian plaza, but it has a lot of good things in it. So we'll start out by showing you our, the challenges you have. You've got a major railroad that we heard at 3 o'clock and I'm sure you are very, it's part of every day of your lives around here, but the major railroad runs right through the middle of town. I think that Greta and I were overwhelmed by how many trains came by and the condition of most of your crossings, so I, my heart goes out to you for that. But you also got I-20 and Industrial Boulevard, so that sort of form, that's sort of major obstacles we had to deal with. This is the trail master plan. Most of you have seen this. You've got a little bit of trail up there that's existing, but most of the little dotted lines there are what we, after going through all the meetings and the steering committee meetings and the public meetings and everything and refining this, this is what we think you should do. So get right into it. The first segment that we want to talk about is downtown. And one of the things that I think all of us agree that you've got this major railroad going through town, we'd like to have a pedestrian crossing and facilitate getting to the school and from the north part of Villarica down to the southern half of western Villarica. So we think that this is the prime location for a tunnel. It doesn't really work downtown where we all wish it would, just because of the grades. We think this is the best place to try to put a tunnel under the railroad on the west side of town. And then down in front of the school, this is what it would look like. Basically, offer school kids a safe way to get to school and it would become part of the whole bike pedestrian system that we're proposing for the city so that people can move about the city as pedestrians and bicyclists. Segment two is from the middle amphitheater area through downtown, crossing the railroad track and along the new road that's going to be built. And this is an overview of what it looks like today and this is what we'd like to do where we come through town and kind of memorialize a crossing and make it a little friendlier for pedestrians and bicyclists. We have to be very careful in proposing things that involve the railroad because we don't want to give anybody the expectation that something can be done with the railroads any time in our lifetime, so we're trying to, I know you guys have had some success with them, but we're proposing things that we think they'll go along with without any problem. And then on Clickhorn Street, we're just, this is a church, I believe, and we're just proposing to bring the trail right through there. This is up around the hospital area, trying to make a loop trail around town. This is, ended up being the model trail that we're proposing and that the steering committee proposed where it would touch the library, touch the hospital. It would be mostly a greenway trail away from automobile traffic and we think this is, I don't know if it's low-hanging fruit, but it's certainly a fruit that needs to go to market though. And we suggest a signalized crossing at the entrance to the hospital and let the trail cross with the new signal to slow everybody down. I think that's the Dallas Highway, if I'm not mistaken.
That would be like the push-button one and then you wait for it?
Well, we think that that, you could probably have a signalized, a regular signalized intersection there where the hospital comes out. We, in our travels down through there, we saw people waiting to get out of the hospital and people having to rush out on Dallas Highway. I think you can piggyback on needing a signal at that intersection and let the pedestrians go across at the controlled intersection. That would be our recommendation.
And it would be a push button?
Yeah, it would be a, I thought you meant just a pedestrian signal.
I did, so that's right. I was visualizing.
It would have a pedestrian phase, so you would, bicyclists and pedestrians could punch it and get the same effect as having a car come up to the, making the signal change as well. There's a rarely-used rail quarter on the west side of town. We originally had our trail going, thinking we could get it abandoned, but again, like I said, we all want to live to see all this done, so we don't think it'll get abandoned anytime soon. It is used every now and then, we understand from the property owner. So we are proposing rails with trails and scenario will be fenced between the railroad and the trail and go down the edge of the right-of-way so it doesn't, so you're not crossing a bunch of driveways and that type of thing. And we did get a lot of people at the steering committee meetings and the public meetings wanting to connect Gold Dust Park and this is, goes down to Fullerville Park. All of these are things that came out of the public outreach of our effort. So you end up with a loop around town. There's a, and also, whoops, sorry about that. So Mirror Lake already has some trails. They're not quite to the standards that we'd like for them to be, but they're, it would be foolish for us not to go ahead and utilize that and finish the loop. So we're proposing to finish the loop around Mirror Lake. And then, of course, you've got a new park out there, Connor Road, Connors Road Park. We would see finishing a side path out to the park and then trails through the park. And Greta, you want to take over and tell me about this one?
A lot of feedback from the public meeting was to get the trail system connected kind of south of I-20. This is one piece where we are coming off of Mirror Lake Elementary School area, Connor Road, and then coming down Tyson Road and then we're connecting over to a utility corridor and it continues all the way then west where it will tie into the second trail segment that is, that is coming south of I-20. And so this is a picture of the gas easement corridor. And again, the easement is on different property ownership and would have to be acquisition with each property owner to be able to get the permission to come along the gas easement. And then from there, the connection, the second connection south of I-20 is coming from South Carroll Road. It's coming down Daniel Road and then connecting by residential apartments and single-family houses to come across the Highway 61 at a signalized intersection and to be able to connect over to the sports complex. This is a view of Daniel Road coming across I-20. You can see the width there where we would propose the trail to be a side path along the bridge, the existing road bridge.
Is there a curb?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what I'm seeing in that picture?
It is.
Something that separates the cars from us on the trail, okay.
That's what we can do there. We laid out a plan or something, but the curb is about all we got room for. We were just, we were just glad we found a way to get across I-20.
Right, without having to have a separate trail bridge. And a lot of times we come into cities and that's all we can figure out is a separate trail bridge. So here's the southern part of that as you've crossed over Highway 61, coming down to the sports complex. This piggybacks on the Bay Spring Creek and would be just a really beautiful greenway trail within the creek corridor there. So that is a quick summary and that's the current trail master plan. You can see the total mileage within the master plan is 22.6 miles. Part of the master plan is implementation strategy, so we worked with the steering committee to really vet what would be the best trail segment to become your model project. And it has, as Ed had mentioned, the model project is suggested within the master plan as the loop that goes to the library and connects over to Tanner Health and the hospital. And that seems to be one where you would just be working with one property owner. We did have a Tanner representative on the steering committee. We've done a lot of work with Tanner Hospital. They are actually a good opportunity because they understand trails. So part of the strategy really, and Ed, do you want to talk about implementation strategy?
Sure. We're tag teaming you here. So what we found that is a good way to make sure these things get implemented, the last thing we want to happen is for you to take our plan, which we encourage you to adopt as part of the city's comprehensive plan, but the last thing we wanted to do is to sit on a shelf somewhere and nothing get built. We're, I'm getting too damn old to just plan stuff. I want to see stuff get built. So we've been very successful in the past in creating, with cities, to create an implementation committee to take this thing forward. It would be made up of city staffers and maybe one or two of you guys, as well as the public that was interested in getting this done and to guide implementation. The, they, to make sure the advocacy stayed intact and to make sure that the funding got applied for and the funding got allocated as to build these. So we've got several different phases of this little loop shown here and we've got, Greta and I went, used our experience and the latest bids that we've gotten for other similar trail projects and we have put together the approximate cost of those first four segments and we've put a timeline together that, in order to get that done in a five And we've put a timeline together that...in order to get that done in a five-year period. So, it sort of gives you an idea of how much money would have to be allocated or donated or wherever cobbled together, I guess is a good way to put it, in order to build that loop within five years. And this sort of gives you a guide too as to how much...how long it would take to do the pre-construction activity and the construction activity for each one.
One thing I do want to point out is on this map, we're showing those first four phases. Our implementation strategy looks at a timeline that is comfortable based on what could be funded locally. And right now, with the road, segment number three on this map could piggyback with your new road. And so, I just wanted to point that out, even though we've priced it as if it's complete construction by itself.
The road being the Mirror Lake connector or Parkway?
Correct. So, the other part within the master plan, and I'll go through this, and you can stop me if I go too fast, is the branding and the design standards. This was the logo that we worked with the steering committee and the public to be able to come up with a name for your trail system. The name that was selected was Gold Nugget Trail and to be able to develop the graphic that you're seeing here. This is what's being proposed within the master plan and then looking at your trail signage to be able to put together a standard, the different types of signs that you would need along your trail system, and to have that so that you would have consistency. When you start your first phase of implementation, that's when you take the conceptual graphics within the master plan. You can further develop those into actually implemented sign panels for fabrication. These were a few of the other elements. Every trail's going to need amenities, so we put in a selected bench and trash can, again, to keep all of these elements consistent and to make sure that each one is considered when you're doing implementation. We also have some construction details showing the typical detail for your trail, the concrete detail for the trail. And we also have the pocket parks, kind of a route bridging detail that we've developed over time. Path has developed, I guess I should say. And fencing is an element that we think is critical, so a t-pan wood fence was one of the design standards that we're suggesting. Also, your intersection details, when you come to road crossings, making consistency with every time you're crossing a road, the look of that. Also, looking at when there is high volume, like on Dallas Highway, and you do need to get across, how do you safely get the trail user across? Is that a signal that's just for the trail or is it at a signalized intersection where the trail can kind of cross with the traffic signalization? Couple more details, obviously, the tunnel under the railroad would be one, being able to span drainage dishes with structural spans. That's what's shown there too. So, those are just kind of an overview of some of the design standards in the master plan.
And what we'd like to do, and I was leading with the desire to have you adopt this at your regular meeting or move it toward adoption, there's two reasons it's important to adopt this plan. The one is that so there's consistency and if different city councils build different segments of it so that you've got the branding and the design details are all the same and the benches stay all the same and everything. But the main reason that I've found that you want to adopt it is in case DOT decides to widen a bridge over to I-20 or in case they decide to widen a highway, if you've got a trail in your master plan, your comprehensive plan shows in that area, they will build that for you and they will improve the road to include the trail or the bridge to include the trail or make room for the trail. We've had this look with DOT on several occasions. The other reason is that if a developer comes in and wants to put a new development in and you show a trail in that area, then it's much easier to convince them to either build the trail where you want it or to line their green space in corridor form so that you can build a trail at a later date. So, for those reasons, we think it's very important for the city to adopt the plan. And we also think it's obviously to the city's best interest to advance the model trail so that you get a mile or so on the ground so that everybody gets all hyped about it and wants it in their neighborhood, and it becomes a priority when you're trying to allocate funding in the future. At this point, we're ready to answer questions, if you think.
You know, part of the very end of the presentation, we did have the work and the study that we did along Temple Street. And so, you know, some of what we presented during the master planning was to have your central focus downtown as Temple Street so that you could have bike pedestrian, more connectivity. And so, we looked at the existing conditions. We did a parking count study. This graphic shows existing at 57 parking spaces. As we started looking at how you would design that space to be able to allow bike pedestrian connection through and actually enhance the storefronts along Temple Street, give them more frontage for outdoor seating and just kind of pedestrian space. We came up with this scenario. You can see the existing 57 parking spaces. In this scenario, it'd become 55. You would only have a difference of two parking spaces. We also looked extending it a little bit further on Temple Street. This proposed option B then shows 53 parking spaces. And so, today, this is what it looks like right outside the building we're in, and this was the vision graphic that we had put together of what it could be.
No, I think we're ready for questions.
Questions? Mr. Barber?
In your other trail plans, have you ever done segment identification not using numbers? Because it seems like numbering the segments creates a self-imposed element of confusion when the model mile is not one. And so, have you done one where you just name the segment and don't number them? Or you...because if you try to number them using the proposed order, that doesn't make any sense either.
Right, that's feedback that we can take, and we can then renumber within the master plan based on those four first segments, if that makes more sense.
I don't know if it does.
So that we can consistently have 1, 2, 3, 4, and then go...our segments right now, you know, we try to have some order as they attach to one another within the master plan. But what we could do is, in the implementation strategy, use letters or something there.
What's after four? What's the proposal in implementation after the first four?
We were looking at a timeline for implementation, so within that timeline, we felt those four first four segments. So, after that, the implementation committee would be able to see what would be next based on funding, acquisition, and what would be ready to be moving forward with any of the other segments.
Yeah, it just seems like taking the numbering out of that eliminates the possibility of somebody looking at it and thinking we're crazy.
Okay, that's good feedback.
When it doesn't go 1, 2, 3, 4 in implementation, I'm going to count it, right? So, I mean, I'm into 1, 2, 3, 4, not 4, 3, 2, 1, or 4, 1, 2. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it just seems like it's unnecessary to confuse that.
I wasn't thinking crazy as much as the expectation that, oh, 2's done, that means 3's going to be next. Well, no, 3 may be way down the road and, you know, I don't care. I mean, if we explain to people, whatever works.
It looks like you've named them all, so...
Yeah, and it could be as easily as just taking the number out. Yeah.
Exactly.
And you know, graphically, within the master plan, we do try to have each one connected graphically, so that's where we put that number. But maybe it's as easy also as using an alphabet so that it's not as...we can do either way.
Okay, tell me about the feedback from the guy from Reed Plantation who objected to the rear entrance into Reed. And if we entertain that criticism, do we go to GDOT or to the engineer and abandon the culvert that's being planned under the north bypass? Because I didn't see a good way to do the trail into the front of Reed, which is what he was asking for.
Yeah, but there was...there was a...I think the reason for that is there was maybe a crime concern of people coming...
I mean, he had some legitimate reasons. I just practically don't see a way to accommodate it.
And that's...
But that single...we're talking about spending, what, 400 grand on the culvert or something? So, I mean, it would increase the cost of that leg significantly to do what we're proposing. So, it may be that going into the front's actually cheaper some way if we give up the culvert. But if we're going to do that, we sort of need to decide that now because that road is being engineered with the culvert 100.
I think either way, you're not giving up your culvert. Otherwise, you're dealing with an issue trying to get people across this new road. So, the cost of that culvert, you know, is minor in comparison to, you know, the safety issue of somebody doing at-grade crossing at a signalized intersection.
I agree with that.
But right here is the graphic for Reed Plantation. One of the things that we did hear was they did want to be connected. It was the same gentleman. And so, what he also said is that his issue is that he wants it connected just to the front of their neighborhood. And truthfully, from a regional perspective, you know, you would hope that one day that Villareca's trail system could connect up to the Silver Comet Trail. But to come into green space that is within their neighborhood allows more opportunity for more people who live there to easily get onto the trail. So, the configuration of the neighborhood has all of these houses that are over Mud Creek into the back of the neighborhood. For people to come all the way from there, all the way along what, you know, he even admitted was poor-quality sidewalks and road system, to get to the front of the neighborhood to get onto this trail along busy roads, I think is not something that would give you a good return on your investment. I think having a true greenway trail connect right into a neighborhood would really be something that everybody in the neighborhood would want to use. And anyway, we can either keep it the way we show it here or we could come parallel with the bypass all the way to the entrance of their neighborhood. And that's what it sounds like he was wanting the line to go right along here.
Right.
So...
But your recommendation is to keep it the way we've got it going into the rear.
Right, and one day when you go to implement that, you know, that's when you can really go to that neighborhood, figure out what is the consensus of the entire neighborhood. You know, Ed will tell you that the master plan is a working document. Even with adoption, it is showing you the desire to connect from one point to another. And there's a lot of changes that happen during implementation when you're acquiring property and you're getting easements that then justify moving it one way or another. And I would say that this would be one of those cases, that by the time you implement this segment, it has that flexibility.
So, you see the culvert hooking us up to Silver Comet one year, huh?
Hey, the Silver Comet is an amazing trail, and if you could connect...
It's a long way up there.
Yeah, yeah.
How many miles is that from that?
You know, I haven't measured it from here. Does anybody know?
I know that if you get in a truck at Dallas and Punkin Town, 15 to 20 minutes, you are up there near the Chamber of Commerce where you can jump on at 278, 61 and 278.
This man to my life has made things happen that are amazing, so, yeah, never know.
Other questions? I apologize, I've got to leave in about five minutes, so I'm happy to answer anything else.
I'm going to ask my question only because it's right where you are, and I was going to take us back to page 27 there. How is that crossing across the north loop bypass? I didn't get a visual of how that worked, of how everybody gets across there.
That's what they're talking about. That road project has a box culvert where the trail will go under the new road within a tunnel.
Yeah, that's what we approved. We approved that.
Now, that's a different location, is it not, from the one we talked about that was going to be just...it's the same place? Okay, I'm just...
You approved it back in the fall.
Yes, yes. And we paid money for them to engineer...okay, I'm good. Because I didn't know that was the same place, and it had me worried because I go, wait a second, I know we paid engineering money.
But the first culvert that they presented is North Dogwood.
Right, yeah.
This is one that we talked about with Kicking Wood back in the...I think in the fall.
Yeah, and we approved it.
I just wanted to make sure it was the same location because I knew we were paying for engineering for that.
Well, before you leave, I want to say this, and I attended all but one, I think, of the little input meetings, and a lot of the people in this room right now attended and were a part of that, and I appreciate all the input. And the one thing I appreciate a lot...appreciate a lot of things you did, but the one thing that I really applaud you on is that all the public comments, the people that talked to you, sent comments in and talked to me, you've incorporated those into the plan, and I appreciate that.
That's what we're here for. It's going to...ultimately, it'll be your trail and we'll be in another city, so we want you to like it.
But you want to be able to brag about it, too.
That's right.
And say, we did that trail.
Other questions, comments?
How many miles is it for us to connect to the Green Belt or Greenway or whatever?
Oh, I hadn't thought about that either.
I'm going to do a Carrollton expert.
How many miles is that from the Bplex?
Yes, from the sports complex.
From the Bplex to the closest point of the Greenway?
17.
17 miles?
I wouldn't think it's that far. It's probably closer to 10 or 12.
If I'm those Carrollton pretty good now, I don't know if I'd argue that.
North Carrollton, Lake Carroll?
The lake, yeah.
I was going to...actually, I was going down 166.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we will be talking about this on Tuesday. Just a couple of comments I'd like to make. I did get a couple of concerns about, you know, why are we approving this, you know, how are we going to come up with $22 million? And I want everybody to remember that this is a roadmap. This is not an implementation plan. We have three master plans that I know of in parks right now, including the Connor's Road Park, that we have no funding identified for. So, just understand that we're not committing $22 million tax dollars, SPOSS dollars or whatever. And also, I'm excited to report that Tuesday, and I don't think y'all knew this, Tuesday I met with the president and CEO of Tanner Health Systems, and we talked specifically about the trail, and they were jumping for joy and very, very positive feedback from them. And the only question they had or request was that we brand their name on some of their stuff along the trail. I said, that's not a problem. So, thank you.
Two things that actually Councilman McDougall brought to my attention today, and I thought about him, and I think he made a good point. Next Tuesday, we're going to have a presentation by Carroll County Commission Chairman Marty Smith on the T-SPOSS that's coming up in November. And so, I would like to make sure that that gets announced, that that will be here. If anybody from Villareca, from the area, wants to hear about our...the T-SPOSS, it's going to be on the ballot. They should come to that meeting, and you'll get that information from Chairman Smith. And also, we have a check presentation from Norfolk Southern. They have awarded us a $5,000 grant to our police department for the purchase of body cameras. So, we're not all bad guys, I guess. But anyway, they'll be there, so I'd like to get that, if we can make sure that gets announced for Tuesday. And thank you, Councilman, for making that suggestion.
And thank you, Councilman, for making that suggestion. Okay. Tab B, governing body. You will have... You have the minutes of the July fifth meeting, and the July tenth meeting, and the special call meeting of July the eleventh. So, please look those over, and we will approve those hopefully on Tuesday night. Item number two, discussion of times and dates of our council meetings. And I believe we said this would begin in October. So...
So, we've had a proposal that we considered to move from a work session council meeting to two council meetings using Monday nights. And that met with some resistance. And then, we talked about moving to the second and fourth Tuesday, and that created a conflict. So, at this point, we have a dead item unless we have another suggestion that meets with everybody's approval. So, I'm looking for suggestions of times that don't conflict with anybody's schedule.
I think it's fair to say that it's gonna be somewhat difficult to guarantee that there's no conflicts with anyone's schedule. I think when I made this motion last month, I thought that the second and fourth Tuesdays would work. And we had a little bit of a conflict. But I'd like us to still do this. So, I would like us to have some discussion about whether or not the second and fourth will work. And if not, let's hammer out what will work, so that that can be done on Tuesday.
See, I'll be giving that some thought. I know the Planning and Zoning Commission did effects directly. So, we would certainly need to make them aware of that.
Right. Historical reservation is the second Tuesday. So, they would both have to move.
If we move, one of them could move to ours, the one we're not using the first Tuesday.
Another could go to the third. But David has conflicts on other days. So, the Mondays and Tuesdays were better for him, I think.
They were, but that was... The only other conflict they had was the third Tuesday. And I can conceivably... I control that, so I could change that if I needed to.
It would seem like we need a concise configuration of all the dates that are available.
Maybe we can get Mr. Lisa to go through and mark down those dates that the people you're talking about, those committees?
Yeah, we have the calendar in the council packet. But, you know, I mean, we looked at it. That's how we determined what we could and couldn't do. I talked to David, he gave me his availability, you know. But the motive behind this was twofold. One was to get off of the first Tuesday, which is Carroll County Commission meeting. And the other one was to have two voting sessions and no work session to see if we could have a smaller agenda and get things done a little bit more timely.
So, can we go to that second and fourth?
I have conflict with the second Tuesday.
And is there any flexibility at all?
When we start at seven, so if you did something before seven... Because they changed the meeting to the first Tuesday, so... I mean, to the second Tuesday, so that I could be there. Because they had it on the first Tuesday. So, they moved it to the second Tuesday, so that I could be part of the meeting. And it's important to me.
Would they like the first Tuesday back, which was their original choice? Would they like that back?
I don't know.
Because if they would, it would work, right? Well, I don't know. Is there anybody else?
No, I would still be... I would still be good with the second and fourth.
What if we...
No, just me and I. She meant my meeting. Would they go back to the first?
Would they go back to their original choice?
If they go back... Does that solve the problem, if they go back?
If they go back to the first Tuesday, that would solve my problem.
Can you find out that? Can you find out an answer to that?
I'd say I would check on it. I don't know.
I'm available on days that didn't work.
Now, if that didn't work, our only other option to stay on those days would be to start at five? I know we like to start at six.
That doesn't work good for the public, though.
Yeah, I don't think that works. It's just not worth it. I want more people here, not less. I think I'm good with the second and fourth, so I think it's down to Shirley now. Ms. Shirley, can you find out?
Yeah, I would check. See, they moved back to...
Okay. We'll... I'll just plan to try to talk individually and maybe be prepared for something Tuesday night.
Okay. Tab C, city manager. Mr. Barber?
All right. The first item under my section is, again, consideration of a lease renewal with Gaston Outdoor Advertising for the space over near I-20 behind Glanton Heinzman. Mr. Gaston has submitted to us two different documents. One is a proposal to purchase a longer-term easement instead of being in this lease agreement. And the other is a request for concessions in the renewal from the current terms of the agreement. So, that's... Those documents are in your packet. And he's here, if y'all want to...
I'll say Mr. Gaston did ask if he could speak today. So, nobody has a problem. I think we'll light him up.
Mayor and council, my name's Alan Gaston. I live Carrollton. And I have two proposals before you. And the first proposal is a purchase of a perpetual easement. And I've got a sort of a little bit of a map here. But this is I-20 running westbound. Exit twenty-four down here and exit twenty-six here. This is the billboard located on Bobby Dobbs' property. And this is the billboard located on City of Villareca's property. Mrs. Florence donated this property... This is a property line right here, to the City of Villareca in nineteen ninety-four. And her property got split by the... When the interstate came through, it just left this little sliver over here. And the widest part of this piece of property is about sixty feet. And it even gets narrowed down here. It's bad design here, but it goes to forty feet down to zero. And then, there's a creek right here. And all the property behind this is owned by Bobby Dobbs. So, it's landlocked, that you can't get to the property, you know, anywhere right here. But then, it circles around here where the creek crosses. And we have a bridge here to get to the property. And then, it connects to the city here where the AT&T has an easement. And City of Villareca has their sewage line that runs down here. So, I was... One proposal is, is just to buy perpetual easement like you would buy a cemetery lot. And it'd be a ten-by-ten square right here for thirty thousand dollars for this spot here. That's one proposal. The second proposal is, if we do not do a perpetual easement, we do a billboard lease, what's in the billboard lease that's presented to you says that... Right now, I'm paying you four fifty a month. But the lease that's being proposed from the city is that instead of paying you four fifty a month, that you use one of my billboard faces on I-20, which is twelve hundred a month. So, it's like I'm losing seven hundred and fifty dollars a month by doing that trade. I don't mind trading billboard space, but I'd rather trade the exact amount of money I'm paying the city, which is four hundred and fifty a month. And that would be more like a billboard on Highway sixty-one or twenty-seven or I-20 in Heflin, Alabama, or over the Alabama line. I've got the finances and already had the loan from the bank of fifty thousand dollars to cut the trees on private property and the right-of-way. Already spent sixteen thousand last week on Bobby Dobbs' property, on private property. We've already done the surveying and counted the trees on the DOT's right-of-way. But what I've used as collateral is the contracts of what I get off the billboards. And this trading out a complete billboard face would... I mean, it's just... I mean, it's not a very good deal for me, because I'm losing, you know, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. The other item is, the lease says I have to have workman's compensation for insurance for my employees. But I am under five employees myself, so it doesn't require me to have workman's compensation. But all my subcontractors all have workman's compensation that work, you know, for me. The last thing is, if the City of Villareca has two billboards now, they're paying another company on Highway sixty-one. And it would probably be about the same amount that I'm paying the city right now per month. So, you could save that money that you're paying those companies to swap that out. And if the city ever is doing a billboard campaign, I would like to... For them to at least let me have an opportunity to bid on that campaign. And that's... If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
David, you want to weigh in on the worker's compensation question? I don't think that's a...
Yeah, I don't think that'll be a problem. If he is required to have worker's compensation, he needs to show us that he's got a certificate for it. If he is not required to have it... And I think it is accurate that if you have under five employees, you're not required to have worker's comp. That should not be a problem in the contract.
Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear some of your way in on... We've already got a proposed lease agreement here.
Well, for questions for Mr. Gaston?
Yeah, basically, the existing agreement and the proposed agreement are fundamentally unchanged. So, what... I think the challenge that Mr. Gaston has is to sell y'all on either the idea of selling him the land or on why the city should make a concession to the existing agreement. That's... I think that's the two questions that you're trying to answer. That land doesn't have any future use for the city, that I can see. But if we were to sell it, which I wouldn't recommend selling land, but if you would sell it, you wouldn't want to sell the whole piece.
I would also raise a question on, if you're going to sell it, whether or not you can just negotiate directly with one person. I think you'd have to put it up for bid.
And I think that was the biggest concern I had with that. I had already expressed that I'm... I wouldn't see a circumstance where I would probably be in favor of that, anyway. So, the other question is, if we were going to sell it, I do think we would have to list it and give other folks... So, I think the question before us is not this perpetual easement or this sale. I think it's the negotiating of this contract. And I absolutely understand your point. I mean, you're saying if I got four hundred and fifty dollars that I'm paying you every month, that seems like somehow how the fair market rent was decided upon. So, to trade it for twelve hundred dollars in services doesn't really seem fair. But I think my question gets to whether or not four fifty is actually a fair number and where that came from. Because the original agreement I read didn't include the four hundred and fifty dollars. I believe this was added only in the last two years. Is that right?
I think that's right.
Well, when the lease started, it was four fifty a month.
And then, something happened?
With Steve Russell, it went for like ten. And Larry Wood was a controller, and it went four hundred and fifty a month for a long time. And then, they traded out a billboard in Alabama. Well, they did trade out a billboard here on I-20 in Villareca, which there's, you know, for about... It's about seven or eight years where I lost a lot of money during those eight years. And we finally got it moved to Heflin on I-20, which was more of the four fifty, five hundred, you know, range per month. But it did start out being four fifty a month, you know, just given a check.
Okay. I don't know if I have any more questions for Mr. Gaston.
So, when you're talking about selling the property, you were talking about a ten-by-ten. You're talking about the entire property or selling?
I think any part of it. If the city is going to sell any part of its property, whether it's ten-by-ten or the entire track, I think you can only sell it by putting it up for bid. You can't just negotiate directly with one property.
We'd have to give it to the development authority and have them do it.
The main advantage I think I saw in that is just... It's always uncomfortable sometimes to have government and private business kind of entangled in this sort of lease, I think, sometimes.
Well, I mean, for the city to lease out...
Leasing to private people or whatever.
Yeah, that... I'm not troubled by that on leasing it out if we don't have any use for it. And if we can... As long as we're not giving up... Giving it up completely without putting it out for bid, I see nothing wrong with us leasing out the property if we can make some income on it.
Okay. So, then, the only thing that would be my big point on this is assuming these numbers are correct about what that billboard is worth. And I don't know, because I don't know what they're charging for all the billboards on twenty to rent them, is I think it would not be... I don't think it would be good for the city to be in the position to ask a business owner, whoever that might be, to give us something for a third of the market value. But I think at the same time, we should charge what's fair rent. And so, I don't know if that four fifty... I don't know that. That's not my expertise to know if that's what we should charge for... To have that property that that sign's on. But I do take issue with asking any business to do something for the city for a third of what their real value would be, dealing with someone else, with the private market.
So, do you have a proposal for this agreement? Do you have a proposal for this agreement?
I would... If we're not gonna ask for the face of that sign, I guess my proposal would be, let's say that the city gets a sign that we're happy with, that's about that four fifty value, if that's one of the ones on sixty-one. Or that we just... He pays us rent, and we don't trade out a face of a sign.
So, my concern would only be that whatever the rent is, is that that's a fair rent. If it turns out that the fair rent is twelve hundred dollars a month, that's not gonna bode very well for what you're talking about.
Correct.
I was in favor two months ago of letting the city manager come up with a lease that was good for the city and good for Mr. Gaston. I have no problem with that. But my job is to look out for the city. I think he did that. And if he feels like there is some room that he needs to take, you know, some more consideration into that four fifty a month, because that was an arbitrary number that was added... Well, you say it started twenty years ago, back in early two thousand. Seems to me, over time, that rent might have increased. That might be something for you to look at. But if Mr. Gaston... For me, Mr. Gaston is good with the lease we have right here. I'm good with it. If you want to continue to negotiate with the city manager, I'm good with that, too.
Yeah, I have no problems with the lease at all, just for the trade-out is not the... And billboards have gone up all the way to nineteen ninety-six, around when the Olympics came in. But then, it leveled off and then went down, so it hasn't. I mean...
You said ninety-six?
Yeah.
Is the four fifty a current good price, or is that just a low price? Because that sound like it...
That's the exact same price I'm paying Bobby Dobbs next door. And the other two locations I have are perpetual easements. And that's pretty much what's the going rate on I-20 is.
Even though it was created a decade ago, I mean, still the going price, huh?
Yep.
Well, twenty years ago.
The price of billboards went up nineteen ninety-six, leveled off, and then went down. And it stayed around that same price.
Let me ask you this. Is it fair to say that when you come up with this agreement back in the early two thousands and you did this face swap for, let's say, four fifty a month, was that what you were renting those billboards for back in early two thousand?
That wasn't my choice to do that. I didn't want to do that.
Well, you did that with Steve Russell, right?
No, Steve Russell, we did four fifty a month.
Not a trade at all?
No trade at all.
When did the trade come up?
And Steve said, I'll be here forever. And you know what happened there. And five...
Nobody's forever.
Wasn't here forever.
Five... And after... He said, we're just gonna do the list for five years. And then, after that five years, then, I think it was Rusty Dean was on the...
Tourism board.
Tourism board and that. And they said, well, we're gonna trade it out. So, then, that's when the trade went. I had... I never... I had, I never wanted to trade, because it, it's not a good deal for me at all. I mean, I'm losing $750 a month.
And you feel like you've, you've been losing that all along?
Oh, yes, definitely.
As long as we've been doing the trade?
Right.
Well, my concern is that I, it's been expressed to me that, that we really don't want a billboard in Heflin, Alabama, and maybe we do want 61, I don't know. So we're getting into some gray area here that I, I really prefer, uh, not to have to, to get into, so I'd be okay with, with coming up with what a fair rent and not doing the trade if that's better for you, but I don't, I don't know that that is something that has been looked at. It is hard for me to believe that, uh, that, that the 450 was good 20 years ago and it's still good today, but I don't know.
But it's sort of 20 years ago is here and now it's there, but 1996 it went up because of Olympics, and it's gone down and leveled back off to where it was 20 years ago. I mean, that's pretty much how-
Very well may be.
That's how the sale of, of, my market has been with the billboards in that area.
I'd be okay with letting the city manager finalize the deal with him and bring it to us.
I've already done it twice.
Well, let me ask you, did you do it with Mr. Gaston, though? Is this, or are you just saying this is the deal that you think's the best deal for the city of Villarica, and this is what you're recommending us go with?
What I'm proposing is a lease renewal based on what the agreement was from the time that whoever, Rusty or whoever, got involved in this thing was, until it got changed back to 450, which I don't think y'all did. I think that was done by the city manager without your approval, is I understand it. So I'm just presenting back to you what I think is the last thing the council here approved.
And whether we use a billboard or he pays 450 a month is up to us, right, in this agreement? It's up to someone here in the city?
Right.
Okay.
And as long as we have a reason to use the face, that's more valuable to us. The quandary that Mr. Gaston is in is that he built a very expensive structure without a long-term lease and is now stuck.
I think what I'm hearing the council say is that we're more comfortable with just outright lease than we are trading off billboards, and I think that's probably the, the same thing Mr. Gaston is saying, that it's not a fair trade. So is it reasonable to say that, uh, Mr. Bobby, you can come up with a number that, that you feel comfortable with, again, third time, uh, for Tuesday night, and let's get this thing, because we've been dealing with this now for-
Well, my recommendation is to not renew the lease.
Well, let, let-
So, I mean, if, y'all are going to decide what to do with this. If you want to renew it and, and get 450 a month, then you could, you could just strike that one phrase out of the-
Well, I think-
Renewal and go with it.
Yeah, but I, I think we're trying to figure out if $450 a month is, is fair market value.
Well, that's what Mr. Gaston's telling us. I mean, he said that consistently the first time he came in here.
And that's what the original lease started out with. It was paying cash, I mean, or check each month, so I'd like for it to go back to how it was the original instead of how it got twisted in between of a trade-out.
So just a straight 450 lease?
Well, not 450.
We've got property sitting there, we can't use it for anything else, we can be collecting $450 a month for it? Or nothing for it?
All we do for it is maintain the access to-
Which we still do in this new lease? So here, here's what I would say. I, I, first, this is just me, I would feel comfortable if you would, uh, take some time to come up with a, a number, maybe do some research, find out what is a fair number, and bring that back to us, uh, to consider, uh, on Tuesday, if possible, or I'm going to agree to the lease that you've written right here. That's, that's how I feel about it.
Any other comments?
The billboard right next to mine is, there, there's two of them owned by Mr. Tippins. I think he has a gutter service, and I have no idea what Clear Channel Outdoor is paying him, but you could ask, see if he would tell you. Uh, that's two there. You could ask, um, Richard and Jimmy at East West Truck Lines what JHC Outdoor is paying him. The other two I have are, are perpetual easements. You can ask, uh, Richard Smith what, uh, Clear Channel Outdoor is paying him on his two sites, and you can ask Larry Boggs what Clear Channel's paying him on his site, to see if 450 is, is in the-
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hopefully we can get this done Tuesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, request for temporary signage for the 2018 Frontiers Rodeo.
All right, this is, uh, one of the first things that's come around now, the second time since I've been here. So this is a request from Clint Chance for, um, permission to put a fixed number of signs of specific dimension throughout the community to promote the rodeo. And we, we approved this under similar circumstances last year, so I think we need to send him a calendar with the dates that the agendas do, and maybe that'll get, keep us out of this situation.
Questions or comments?
We're very specific with him on where he puts the signs, correct?
Say it again?
We're very specific to him on where we put, where he puts the signs.
I think we're specific about where he can't put the signs, but not really so much where he does put them.
I think they're all private property.
It's what he indicated last, last year and the year before, and then there was some infringement.
We're recommending that you approve it, though.
Any other questions? Okay, tab D, item one, was tabled by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, uh, we will not see that one until next month. That is our list. Uh, tab E, Parks Recreation, item number one, Senior Services Contract Renewal.
Good afternoon again. This is the annual contract, um, with the Three Rivers, uh, as it pertains to, uh, our senior services. What I provided to you in your cover sheet, you can see, um, essentially how we're being reimbursed for, um, our meals, the cost of our reimbursement for our meals. I will point out that this is, this is the third year, so after this year, we will be resubmitting the application for the three-year cycle as well, but, um, the allocation is $96,631. The fiscal year starts, of course, July 1st for them, but we probably didn't receive this until after their fiscal year started, a couple of weeks into July, so it has been executed on their part, so I'm requesting approval for this, uh, contract renewal.
Same thing we've been doing every year.
Yes, you've been doing this for almost 30 years.
Who's doing the Excel spreadsheet now? Are you doing that?
For, on, accounting for all the meals. Um, actually, I get them weekly, so.
It's, it's a burger. It's, I like spreadsheets, but I don't like that one.
Yes, and we submit the information to you guys weekly in the weekly report as well, the number of meals that we're serving and home delivered as well.
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Vicky. Tab F, Public Works. Mr. Griffin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here today just to request that we, or you guys give the city permission to sell some of the military surplus that we procured a few years ago. A lot of the list that I, but-
Please do.
Thank you. All right. Um, yeah, it's, it's real simple. Everything that we're requesting to purge is, is all inoperative, so, um, would free up a good bit of space as well in the Avanti Building.
Glad you got some good parts off of them.
We did. We, we've torn these things apart and, apart and-
So we'll also our tank, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the Dean, the M9 or-
Yeah.
We also have an aircraft carrier out here that we're going to get rid of.
Where's Parker at, anyway? Oh, oh, he's gone, okay. Yeah. But the chief had to give permission, right? Oh, oh, okay.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Gaston.
Item number two, emergency replacement of gear reducer. Oh, this is going to be good.
Oh, this has got to be good.
I've already got the preliminary on this one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. What I have before you, uh, this afternoon is a request for, to, uh, expedite a, an emergency replacement, uh, for 150 horsepower gear reducer for our number one aerator, uh, at the, uh, West Plant. Um, last Saturday, um, the, the unit tripped out, it sent an alarm, uh, our standby people came in and restarted the unit, and when they did, they had a pretty bad grinding sound that was occurring in the gearbox, so they immediately shut it down, and then they went through it, uh, Monday and Tuesday to try to determine the cause. Uh, this unit had been serviced a couple of weeks prior to this, by the way, and the oil pump system on it was lubricating properly. The best we can determine that the, some teeth on the upper gear probably had a shear frac-, uh, fracture, a stress fracture, I mean, and, um, the amount of damage it caused was because it was the top socket, in that, as it started shearing metal from the top, the metal started walking down. There were very close tolerances on the other gears, started shearing off the face of teeth on, on the rest of the gears. But this is a very critical piece, uh, to our operation, because it, it not only puts dissolved oxygen in the process, but it provides a motive force to move that flow, uh, through the basin. Uh, this is the sole, uh, source provider for this unit, and, um, to rebuild the unit would be, oh, 73% of a new one, so the staff's recommending to go with a new unit, uh, with a new warranty on it, and that's in the, in the amount of, uh, $59,361. Uh, these things are not on the shelf, so, uh, the supplier has said that it'd be 18 to 20 weeks before we, the turnaround on this unit.
Is that normal? 18 to 20 weeks?
I, I talked with some of the, uh, sales reps, uh, in the last day or two, and they indicated right now that's kind of standard. With the economy such as it is, um, they're selling a lot of equipment and they don't have it on the shelf, and these are finely machined gears, so it, it takes some time.
They for, so we're forced into buying something else to fill in that gap, based on what I read, right?
No. Well, we're, we're trying to do a backup. Actually, the, the basin's got two of these units, a number one and a number two, and, and they actually put dissolved oxygen in, in the front end of the process and the back end, so the number two is working. Uh, we have used some floating aerators that are very small compared to these. Uh, we are fortunate enough to, uh, get a couple on, on loan from, uh, Buchanan. Uh, they're very small units, and they're, they're providing some oxygen right now. Theoretically, the second unit is supposed to supply the whole system, but we've got it at about two-thirds capacity right now, because we do not want to overtax that. If we lose that one, we'll be in real trouble. So we're trying to, to not max it out right now.
So we can nurse that along. It won't be, I thought from the email, it said we were going to have to buy two other things to hold us over until-
Yes, I'm-
We'll have to buy two small ones.
Yeah.
Is that-
We bought, we bought a couple that we've got in place right now, but they're like three horsepower compared to, we're trying to get three more 10 horsepower in there, and we're in the process of trying to acquire them.
So we do have to buy the ones we read about in the email to hold us over till we can get-
Yes.
Till they build whatever-
Yes, right.
So Pete, we're still in compliance right now?
We are.
No, no compliance issues, but what you're saying is that if, if the second pump does, or gearbox goes down, we're-
Well, I mean, you've got several components. You've got a, 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 a drive unit that dri- that drives this unit as well, so if, if the, if that unit would go out, we do have a backup. We could rob the number one and, and go, while, while we're waiting on, on the other gearbox.
So you have a contingency plan in place?
We've got a contingency plan.
Okay.
You'd need a different part of the aerator to fail. If the same part on number two fails as number one, then you can't rob it.
Right.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure we had a contingency plan, should worse come to worst. How long has this thing been in operation?
Uh, as long as the plant's been in operation, which is, uh, probably eight years or so, and, uh, just to give you a, a sense of, of size of this, the unit that it drives is a, uh, 18-foot-long shaft with two paddles on it. The biggest paddle on it's 10-foot diameter, and, uh, so there's a lot of torque on this thing.
Mm-hmm.
But it's 30, you know, it's, it's, uh, it runs every day, it's continuous duty, 365, 24/7, so.
I guess we've inspected the one we have left very thoroughly to make sure we don't have something coming up on it.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, at what point do you declare an emergency for this? Why are we waiting five days to be able to, for 18 weeks?
We didn't get the price on it until-
Late western afternoon. You know, and, and we were, we, we called up probably a half dozen times trying to shake the tree to get, get the quote from the company, but they had to do the assessment first, and that, that took a couple of days upfront.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I was happy to hear Pete finally talk to me about something in the sewer plant that I understood, because like, number one and number two in a sewer plant, I swear to get that.
Tom made a funny. Thank you, sir. Tab G, item number one, financial update.
Uh-oh. She regains her title.
I don't have just one, I have two PowerPoints today.
I told you.
All right, this is the June financial update. Uh, this is just the abridged version for today. First is the water sewer, uh, well, our enterprise fund revenue and expense, first one being water and sewer. Uh, you can see there, we've had 48% improvement from 2017. Obviously, a big part of that is, well, the part of that is the rate increases that we've had this year. If you look at the revenue line alone, you can see over a half a million dollar swing, um, and again, that's our rate increases that you're seeing there. We also have more tax fees this year than we had last year, so that's part of it. Um, our expenses have grown, but not in the same amount, so you can see, we had almost a $600,000 loss at this point last year, and we're down to just under $300,000, so almost cut it in half. And then in sanitation and solid waste, we, it looks a little bit better this month than it has, but we're still showing a loss there, um, but we have, it looks pretty good considering we have more personnel and higher tipping fees compared to last year. But with the rate increases, you can see that the revenue has gone up 150,000 alone, so we're seeing great improvement in our business activity, but we'll talk later about what needs to happen for next year. Okay, next sheet. Just wanted to point out some other highlights from, those were our enterprise funds. These top two are some of our other indicators. Our first one is our sales tax. At this point last year, we had 1.1 million, and this year, at, as of June, we've already brought in 1.3 million. That's sales tax from Carroll County and Douglas County. And then the next item is our hotel tax. Um, that's nearly doubled in this, from last, from last June to this June. Now we have folks that are collecting it for us, auditing for us, and they're, um, they're staying on top of the, um, hotel vendors in town, and they've had direct communication with some of them who haven't filed timely and things, and last I heard today, uh, maybe yesterday, we, we are caught up on collecting all those liabilities, so that has helped significantly. Uh, the next one is actually an expenditure or an expense. You can see the savings we've had on our water purchases. At this time last year, we had already bought $263,000 worth of water. At this time last, or this year, we've only bought 133,000, so I keep saying it, kudos to Pete and their staff out there that have, um, made these significant improvements. And then last summer, we had 137 employees. This does not count our seasonal employees at summer camp and all, uh, compared to this year, 152 employees, so. That doesn't necessarily mean the number of positions went up, but we may have filled more than we had filled at this time last year.
And this is the abbreviated version, so we'll get the full version on Tuesday night. Any questions or comments?
I have one more slide if you want me to show you.
Yeah, one more.
Self-funded.
Insurance.
Oh, yeah, the good slide.
This is three quarters into the, into our self-funded process, so at this time last year, we'd spent over a million dollars. That's money just sent to, uh, our insurance company, which was United- That's money just sent to our insurance company, which was United Healthcare, whether we spend that money or not. And so far, we have saved almost $300,000.
I just appreciate the way you put it together. I thought it was easy to see, easy to read, nice and concise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two?
Item number two, you didn't have the attachments till today, so I apologize for that. These are proposed budget amendments for 2017, and we just heard the 2017 audit report from our auditor. And one of the findings that he mentioned was that we had some funds that were not...we didn't operate under a balanced budget during the year or an adopted budget. So these budget amendments are to correct that some of these, like the first two, the seized funds for the police department, I don't like to budget for those anyway, so I stepped out there to ask him how he wants me to handle that. He said, "Budget $100." That's what we tell people. I mean, you don't know what to expect as far as what the police are going to seize for funds. But going forward, we will just budget $100 or $1,000 to cover ourselves there. So these are the actuals from 2017. We need to budget revenue of $100. It was like $94 and some change. And the offset of that, to have a balanced budget for the federal seizures fund. The next one was the state seizures. We did actually bring in some seized money in this fund in 2017. So this is to adopt the revenue of $9,200. Yes, for the seized funds as well as some interest, and then the offset of fund balance, basically increasing the fund balance for that amount. The next fund is the drug task force fund. Honestly, I was not aware of what this fund was used for. In the past, it was a transfer between the general fund and the drug task fund. Basically, we get money from this other agency to pay for half of a drug task force officer. And so we don't...the payroll's not in that fund. The money wasn't even being received in that fund. So basically, I figured that out, and I did a transfer to this fund after the year-end. And it just needs to be...we just need a budget amendment to make up for that, and going forward, we know what that fund is for. So this would be to set up the reimbursement that we received in the amount of $25,450. And then at the bottom, since it wasn't done in 2016, basically moving all that other for the current year and the previous year to pay for that officer in the general fund because his payroll's coming out of the general fund, cleaning out that fund, basically. So it should be...it should net to zero every year. So that's what that budget amendment is for.
Okay. The auditor mentioned six funds. I'm counting five here.
Yes. The fifth one is a debt service fund, which is not our bond fund. It's an old fund. We actually had zero activity in it this year. So again, it...I guess if they want us to, we can adopt a budget for $100 revenue, $100 expense to operate under a balanced budget.
You said they were state-mandated.
Yes. So what he said is if you're not going to use that fund, we need to get rid of it. So we have two funds. It should have been seven funds because he didn't list the community green space fund. I don't know. That...I think I asked Verlin, wasn't that 15 years ago or something?
Oh, I didn't even...
We have $99 in a community green space fund that has not been used in over a decade. And so when he said it, this wasn't an issue last year. It actually was. We got written up for that one. It has no activity, so I don't understand the reason of adopting a budget. So either we need to get rid of the fund, or we just budget $100 revenue, $100 expense to offset that.
What was it for?
Green space.
$100?
That's what was left over.
That's just a balance now. They used it to do the... the beautification around the 27...I mean, 61 and Liberty Road.
So do we need a second...
And then what you did when you come in and set up a different account to do...
Gateway.
Gateway.
Yeah.
But they did the beautification around it, which also meant things like when we cut the big hole in front of the old Rite Aid, we'd have money from out of that, and I think it was used for that, too. But it was used all over town, not just those places.
So we can even leave it as-is for possible future use, and we just know that we'll budget $100 here and there every year. We can do that.
Well, if we're not using it, I don't know. I think of like at home, if you have something in the cabinet or in the garage, you haven't used it for 10 years or whatever, it's time for it to go. If we need one again, we'll develop one. Why have something sitting there with a little bit of money or saying we have $100 there just to carry it through for no reason?
What's your recommendation?
I'd rather get it off the books if we're not going to.
I agree. I would, too.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. And then the other two were the SPOS funds. So typically, before the audit is complete, I do bring y'all budget amendments to clean up last end-of-year entries that I made or the entries I know that the auditors have made. There's kind of a fine balance. It has to be after they've done all their work. And I didn't do that this year, so I apologize. We'll get it done next year. So this is to clean up the 2008 and the 2016 SPOS funds for the 2017 year. This is to clean up the budget for those. So this is not actuals or any...you know, this isn't expenditures. These are expenditures that have already happened in 2017, just cleaning up the budget for that. So if you look at the '08 one, we had interest that wasn't budgeted, so I'm budgeting $400 for that. We had another income of $9,300. This was cleaning up the books again for the audit. We found a check that was written out of the wrong account, wrong bank account, so I had to transfer some money for that, $9,300. We had the HGH paving for $82,000. That happened in early '17. We had some other capital improvements to our water sewer lines for $5,700. And then when Jim came on, we bought the backup server for $38,000. So we need to do those budget amendments. And then the Douglas County SPOS fund...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you. So the problem is...I'm just trying to make sure I understand this. The problem is, we hadn't done those amendments, and they're saying, "You need to do those amendments sooner. You need to do them at the time you do them or close to the time you do them." Is that the gist of it?
So because we didn't do it before year-end, we closed 2017 with that fund being overbalanced, out of balance, basically.
Okay.
Overspent.
Okay.
And then 2016, we had $754,000 in revenue. So I don't even think we budgeted for Douglas County SPOS fund because it was new. I'd have to go back and look. But anyway, we need to budget for the funds we did receive, $754,000. And then the interest we received, which was $40. Police vehicles, $133,000 vehicle for wastewater, which was $22,000. And then we did have some engineering done on the Connors Road park, $10,100.
Questions or comments on item number two? Item number three?
All right. So this is now 2018 budget amendments. I was speaking to the mayor yesterday, and I said, "This will just become part of my monthly presentation, is to do any budget amendments that have come up from the previous meeting or during the month. That way, we don't get behind, and I can just bring them to you every month." So this is 2018. And if y'all aren't counting, we are only two months away from being done with our 2018 fiscal year, so the year is flying by. All right, general fund, I have one amendment. This was something we brought to you last month, which was Raftellis. They're the ones who did the utility rate study for us last year. Last month, you approved to have them update the model for us and also work on TAP fee, giving us TAP fee figures for us. So that was $27,840. And what was presented to y'all was that it would be paid for by the water...I mean, excuse me, the sewer TAP fees that we've already received over, over and above our...the budget we had originally. So what you see here is I'm budgeting the expenditure, and then I'm budgeting the transfer from water and sewer. So then if we look at the water sewer fund, you see the opposite of that, where I'm increasing the sewer TAP fee revenue and then the transfer to general fund. The next item was something that you approved a few months ago. This was Brennan Jones to evaluate the lift stations. And we said that would also come out of sewer TAP fee revenue. So again, budgeting the expenditure for him, $81,251, and offsetting that by increasing the revenue that we have actually already received. The next item is our self-funded insurance. I hadn't...when we did the 2018 budget, wasn't sure how the self-funded insurance fund needed to be set up, but now we've been doing this for nine months, and so now I know how to post it and where I'm going to post it. So this is the budget we need for 2018. So this is basically establishing the fund. So establishing the contributions that come from the city to pay for this...what the city pays for the employees, and that's $1,008,900. And then I'm budgeting the portion that comes from the employees, which is $201,000, $150, and then offset that with claims of $878,000. Wellness, we're budgeting, because we have done screenings and things. We did the blood tests and all that, $35,000. And then administrative fees, we pay about $32,000 a month to pay our third-party administrator. We pay for the stop loss. We pay for some other fees in there. So that's $297,000. The next three are updating our SPOS based on the conversations we've been having the past couple of months, the SPOS project list that y'all have approved. This is to make the budget amendments happen for those things. So we had...and some of it's changing what was originally budgeted for '18 to match that project list. So correcting the amount for the AV for the courtroom, I think we had $200,000 in there. We only need $150,000, or that's what we've approved now, so I'm reducing that. We had a little bit left for HGH and the traffic islands there for $11,000. Cemetery wall, $75,000. We had the dumpster pad and screen at the library, $25,000. We had the inspector's vehicle, $20,000. Engineer's vehicle, $24,000. And then the offset to that is fund balance. So since that's our old SPOS, we're using the money that's already sitting there in the fund balance that we'd received years ago.
What is the traffic calming minus $14,000?
Where...
Decrease under Carroll County SPOS?
Oh, 2015.
Yeah, 2015.
Yes, we...I don't have the original in front of me. Can I get back to you on that?
Sure.
Take it out of eight? Because I thought it was in '16, in Carroll, Douglas, and the two new ones.
I think we had more money originally in the 2018 budget, but then when we worked on the updated SPOS list, we reduced it. But I'll have to get back to you before...
Because it was six apiece.
Yeah. So I think it was 20 each, and then we reduced it.
To six each.
Yes. So again, 2015, truing this up to our new project list. So $100,000, we've added for street improvements. We didn't need that gateway, $60,000 anymore. Adjusting the mirror light connector engineering money. Traffic calming, again, I think we had $20,000 budgeted, and we reduced that to $6,000. We had the trailer for the tires for $10,000. And then we removed...we had a side improvement at the parks. We had Spring Lake at the parks. We had the V-Plex ball fields. We took all that out when we did that updated SPOS list. So then we added money for gutters in the boiler at the recreation department. And we also removed the downtown sidewalks for 2018. We pushed that out a year. And then that last line is the fund balance amount. In 2016, again, correcting the street improvements and the traffic calming, so we had $20,000. We reduced it to six. We no longer needed to purchase video evidence storage for our police department because Jim has found a monthly subscription-type plan to do that, so we don't need that in SPOS. We had to correct the fire EMS amount, correcting the Connors Road portion, water sewer infrastructure, and north plant improvements. We added the tractor, tractor for the trailer in there, $35,000, and then the fund balance, again, to balance that. Any questions on those?
Just like the last one, you added to the fund balance. Is that correct? Douglas County?
That means we are using the fund balance. So the 2017 amendments I just brought you, the item we just spoke about?
Yep.
We actually increased our fund balance because we didn't spend all that money last year. So this is using that up, $262,000.
Let's go back up to building improvements. Correct amount for gutters and boiler installed?
Yes.
Mr. Sposht?
So we purchased the gutter...no, the boiler in 2017, and we installed it in 2018. So it's a timing difference of when it was purchased versus when it was installed. But from a capital standpoint, I can...all the money it takes to put a capital asset into use, I can capitalize all that together, so.
What was V-Plex ball fields?
We had money in there expecting to do an expansion, I believe. But that could have been something that was...
Not for $75,000, you wouldn't. Unless that's the infamous sewer line thing that we keep talking about.
No, that was an old item. We were taking it out because that wasn't a project we'd planned on doing anymore in the updated SPOS project list.
I certainly don't, and I should.
Any other questions?
I think I just want to kind of follow up on what Councilman Beth said. I just want to make sure we're using, you know, our SPOS funds correctly. We can use SPOS funds for boiler replacement?
Yes, for recreation.
I think that would be classified as a capital expense.
Okay.
It was five figures, wasn't it?
The boiler itself was...
Ten or eleven?
I thought it was forty. Forty thousand for the boiler.
Yeah, I've been...Sarah and I have been talking about...we use five grand as a cutoff for capital, but for purposes of SPOS, it looks to me like 25 grand should be like the bottom of any specific item that we put in SPOS. Otherwise, we should just budget it in the general fund.
Yeah, I'm not...I'm...
I mean, it's plenty expensive if it was 40 grand, and it's recreation, which is one of the line items.
Yeah, I don't got some question on the number as much as I am, I thought, unless the law has changed, that SPOS legislation specifically said it had to be used for capital purchases, not for maintenance items.
That is correct.
But this was part of the capital purchase.
Did we not replace it, Vicki?
Would that mean not...would that not be...
That doesn't count as maintenance. If you're having to buy a whole, brand-new part...
Why did I not know this when I was a...
Yeah.
We can maintain new tractors and...
I think I've heard that with ESPOS, too, for education, where they did HVAC units, replaced AVAC with ESPOS.
Would you have done an equipment repair that costs more than 20 or 25 grand, though?
Not at SPOS, we wouldn't have.
No, I mean at all. I mean, like I know, maybe we would with the grapple truck.
We would take it out of capital or general fund.
Yeah, that's...
If it was purchase of one, then we'd take it out of SPOS.
So like Tom said, for 2019, we did...anything that was less than $25,000, we didn't attribute to SPOS. So we won't even have that concern going forward. Anything else on those? Okay.
Please proceed.
What? Sorry? Oh.
Next.
All right. Next item is millage rate. So we got our tax numbers last week, and overall, our digest went up slightly. All right, so Carroll County tax digest decreased 3%. Douglas County tax digest increased by 16%. So the net between the two, our digest increased for the city of Villarica. Our current millage is 3.63...excuse me, 6.365, and the rollback calculated to 6.056. So you can see there that the actual taxes levied in 2017 versus what they are expected to be in 2018 is actually a decrease of $33,000. However, this rollback amount is what is used in our 2019 budget. So if we are going with rollback, then we only have to have one public hearing, and we've had to update that date to August 14th, which on your budget calendar, we had already as a budget workshop and a budget public hearing. So if the council is still good with that, then we'll move forward with August 14th as also a public hearing for the millage, and we'll get that advertised.
So you haven't made this advertisement yet?
No.
Well, that's good. You need to adjust the date because Thursday, August 14th don't exist in 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on that public notice, what is MNO exemptions? What is that?
So those are all your homestead exemptions, or if there's a senior exemption, those are all the exemptions they have on their books. So of the total property, $84 million, almost $85 million is exempt from paying taxes. Alisa, will you put this up on the screen?
She can bring it up.
We have eighty-five million in exemptions?
Yeah, but that includes inventory too.
So, our gross digest increased by thirty million dollars, but our exemptions also increased. Therefore, our net digest increased by twenty-three million.
I think a chunk of that's inventory. If you sell out of state, you can exclude it.
You said the exemptions increased?
Yes.
Even after we redid the senior?
Yeah, it's not primarily from that. It's primarily inventory, I think.
So, your recommendation is to set the millage rate at six-point-zero-five-six-zero. My question to you is, how much does zero-point, zero-five-six-zero represent?
It's on there.
One mill is five-hundred-and-eighty thousand, so Tom can do math real fast in his head.
Three and a half million, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what the taxes is, I'm third line from the bottom.
Oh, were you asking point-zero-five-six?
Point-zero-five-six is about thirty-three and a half thousand.
Yeah.
We're talking about reducing the three-tenths of a mill, so that'd be a hundred-and-seventy-five grand or so.
Point-zero-five-six, I think, is about thirty-three and a half thousand. Point-zero-five-six.
Six-point, six-point...
Zero.
Five now, right?
Six-point-three-five.
Six-five.
Six-point-three-five, right.
No, three-six-five.
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 Yeah.
So, it's going to go down a little bit more than three-tenths of a mill. So, that should be a hundred-and-seventy-five, less than two-hundred grand, which is what the rollback is costing.
When you rollback, that means it's less, right? So, if you're gonna...
But you're still getting...
If you're gonna add other, if you're gonna increase, uh...
Water and sewer?
If you're gonna increase, uh, payment for people, how you gonna do that? If you're gonna rollback, how you gonna do that if you increasing salaries?
So, I think what Ms. Shirley's saying is that we are spending more and more money in our budget.
And you rolling back.
But we're reducing the income.
My little brain don't calculate that.
Something allows for the growth, right? That was going to be my question, to ask you to explain that in lay-in terms for me too.
If you went through the budget, actually, we got three-point-two million dollars more this, for this two-thousand-and-nineteen budget in revenue than we had for last year.
Wait a minute.
So, is that gonna, is that gonna take care of the raises and the buying of equipment?
Well, yeah, in her budget.
With the rollback, and that's what I want to say.
If you looked at her budget, it all comes together.
Yeah, I mean, it's a balanced budget is what's being presented. But back to the councilwoman's question, the rollback only, the rollback is generated from reassessment. Any new property on the digest is excluded from the rollback calculation. So, if we had, say, a billion dollars on the digest, and it got reassessed to a billion-one-hundred thou, one-hundred-million, that increase of a hundred-million would have to be compensated for by reducing the millage rate. But if the whole digest went up another hundred-million because of new things or expansion, it's excluded from the calculation.
Correct.
So, we would get the full benefit of the new stuff.
Next year.
But sort of penalized for the reassessment, sort of keeping us in neutral on it, so that, as the value went up, the rate would go down a corresponding percentage, and you get the same revenue.
That's what I was thinking. I know it's a little confusing, but, so, as we build new houses and the developers come in, we're allowed, even with the rollback, that additional income that we're getting for taxes as a result of that, we hang on to that, because since if we build a hundred new houses, our police force now has a hundred new customers and new streets to go down, so we still have to take care of that. So, if it were a rollback that didn't include that, it would be really bad for us, but it allows for the growth, that we keep the money for the growth, we're rolling back the reassessment, which is on everything that's already existing if it went up in value a little bit, like my house or your house or something.
So, if your house went up in value by us reducing the tax rate, you won't be paying as much tax as you would have been had we kept the tax rate the same?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't the house. It was the property that increased on the value, that's the assessment I got. It wasn't the house at all.
Mine was the house.
Mine was, mine was totally property.
Well, let's just call it the property because that's what we're talking about, the property tax assessment. I know that, but the bill is still based on a single number on the tax bill.
The rollback, the rollback applies to the already existing properties that went up in value.
Or changed in value. Is this the net of all the changes?
My house went up in value, but that rollback, so it's going to keep me about the same level or a little lower.
Of dollar amount, that, I mean, so, how is our fund balance looking year over year? That's what I want to know. Are we dipping into that fund balance to be able to do this? And if we are, how much?
We are not in this budget. In twenty-eighteen, taking the nine-month period, we are going to take a loss in our general fund in this year. That was the expectation. We budgeted just under a million dollars that we're going to hit our fund balance this year, because we're not, because of the short year, our big quarter of revenue is that fourth quarter that we're not going to get in this nine-month period. But twenty-seventeen, the audit that was just presented, our general fund did dip down by a hundred thousand dollars, but that was because at the end of the year, I think I presented to y'all, during the audit, they said, "We can see that your solid waste fund has just been in the red for too long, you're never going to pay that back. Even if you get your enterprise activity to where you're breaking even every year, you're still not paying that back." So, as one of our audit entries, we wrote off three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars of solid waste, which basically means we transferred it from general fund. So, without that, we would have added two-hundred-and-eighty-something thousand to our general fund fund balance. But because we took that write-off, it hit our general fund, which means we did take a little bit of a loss in twenty-seventeen that was not expected. But our general fund is still healthy. I can't quote you the number right off the top of my head, besides the hundred-thousand-dollar hit that we just took, and then we do expect to take, like I said, a million-dollar loss this year.
We knew that the last year when we discussed.
Yeah, we knew that when we changed the budget here.
So, really what happens is, really what happens is, as we, as we grow, we are sort of, because all of our revenue doesn't come from property taxes, that's just what we're talking about right now is property taxes. But as we grow, we're able to offset a lot of our expenditures, as in hiring and giving raises, by all of the growth that comes from the revenue sources, not just the property taxes. So, when you talk about the rollback rate, I really have no problem with going with the rollback rate, but I do not want to sacrifice a healthy fund balance to do that. So, that's why I'm asking you those questions, and Tom just handed me this, but this got my attention when the company was presenting it earlier today. So, talk to us a little bit about this red line right here and how it's getting further away from this blue line.
Can I see? What page are you on?
Page ten, I'm sorry.
So, in my, in my previous situation, when I got there, we had a negative ninety-thousand-dollar fund balance. Here, ours is sixty-million and something. So, one of our goals was to have a fund balance that equaled twenty-five percent of expenses. And so, we went from a negative ninety-thousand to about four-million during the time I was there, which put us a little bit over twenty-five percent. Here, we were at sixty-something percent of expenses, and we've dropped down into the fifties, so we're still twice as healthy using that method, is where I was previously. But we worked five years to get there. We're fixing to take a hit here, even as revenue increases, so we're going to drop down into the forty percent of expenses range, which means that we could go five months and pay the bills without revenue if we get down in around forty, right?
Okay.
But after this year, we should start climbing back the other way.
Because of the twelve.
It would take a long time to overcome what we're doing to ourselves by changing.
Changing the budget here, yeah.
Okay, and her financial update, the one that she didn't show us, at the end of June, it says cash in the bank, eight and a half million. Is that the fund balance, or is that part of it, or what?
It doesn't equal it, but it is part of it. And that's our total cash, so that's all the funds. What's the general fund?
That's the pool cash number.
So, what, the impression that you're left with, though, when you start looking at this, is it looks like we were much healthier, we were more responsible in our spending in twenty-fifteen, and we're getting worse as the process goes. However, overall, we still have good ratios, in my opinion, and I think that's what you'll say. My concern is that we don't continue to see this happen again, and I understand what we're talking about, how we changed the budget. We talked about the, you know, the change in the fiscal year, that's what I meant to say. But I just want to make sure that we're careful not to allow this trend to continue, because over a period of time, it's going to be much less healthy than it is right now. So, if, in fact, the budget would not sacrifice the fund balance, I have no problem with the rollback rate, but I want to make sure that we are responsible with how we budget and set this millage rate.
Okay, this does, this line doesn't show, doesn't reflect the increases in the utility rates on the sewer, water?
No, this is general fund, general fund only.
Yeah, the drawback to doing the rollback is that you don't have any money to subsidize water and sewer.
We shouldn't have to, we, since we just increased the rates.
If we do the three-year rate plan, then we don't...
That's what I was going to say.
If we still have to get fund balance after doing that rate increase, we are in trouble.
So...
Because we didn't do it all, we, we would have all gotten slammed all at once if we did the increases that were required. So, rather than bam, here you go, this is what it's going to cost to pay for all this, we went up incrementally, so we're not where we need to be, we still can't fund water and sewer.
We don't know what the next rate increase is, right?
Yes, it's in here.
We do know what it is, and that was the crux of where I was going with this.
Rate increase is in here.
That was a three-year plan, and one of the things we had sort of hoped for is not to have to do the third year, and to maybe have a smaller second year. But if you do the rollback, there's no question that you have to do the full Part II implementation, or it don't work.
What's the difference in the rate increase percentage from last year to this year? Seven and five and...
For water, last year we did seven, this year we're doing five. For sewer, last year was thirty-five, this year's thirty.
Next year should be the first year that we start seeing some volume growth, because this round of houses and business activity that we're seeing should start translating into volume. Right now, it's just construction, which doesn't do as much.
Yeah, we were talking about raises, now, who determines who gets the raises?
So, we had the compensation classification study done that took several months. They came in, they talked to, well, every employee filled out a, or almost every employee filled out what they called a J-A-T, I'm going to remember what that is.
Job assessment tool.
Job assessment tool, which described basically the tasks you do every day, your level of responsibility, your level of supervision, the risk that you take in making decisions, or even physical risk if you're out, you know, on the street. They looked at that for every job, so that's basically like looking at a job description and more. They did focus groups with different groups of employees, different departments, different levels. They talked to upper management supervisors, and then they talked to groups of employees as well. And then, then they did their, so that was more to kind of get a feel for what our jobs look like. And then they did the salary survey where they reached out to neighboring cities, counties, people that we compete with for employees, to get a feel more for the dollar side, and then they combined all that information. And so, they took our current pay grade, and they translated that to what a new competitive market-based pay grade should look like for each position. Then they applied that to the actual individuals that we have, where they are located on their pay grade now. They gave us a couple different implementation plans, all the way up to over eight-hundred-thousand dollars to implement the plan. We did not go with that one. We scaled it back one level, I believe, and we'll talk about it when I talk more about the budget, but it's over, a little over six-hundred-thousand dollars is in there to bring people up to what this company has given us, that they recommend. So, it was all them.
So, it was done through this evaluation phase?
Yes.
So, that determines how much raise somebody gets?
Correct.
All the eight?
Yes, all the eight employees will receive a rate, excuse me, a salary increase based on what they provided to us.
Because those eight are already max?
Well, they're where they should be.
They're where they should be.
Has that study come in?
Yes.
So, we haven't seen it?
Sort of.
Sort of?
They're not.
No, they gave us the numbers because they knew we were working on the budget.
They gave us what we needed to do the budget, they're not a hundred percent done.
Any other questions on, we're still on aisle number three, I mean, four.
Yes, so I'll get this advertised if August fourteenth is good for the council on that.
After me.
What's the fourteenth? Fourteenth is some cop land thing or something, or is that, no, that's your public hearing, right? And what else? Is that a cop land thing?
I don't have my calendar. So, the sixteenth is a special here, that's something we don't already have on the email that I put on the calendar?
What's the sixteenth? This is the fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth is it.
Fifteenth is a cop land meeting.
Any other questions on the millage rate? Moving on to item number five.
Will you pull up my budget?
Are we going to look at this thing, Buckets, again? Only Buckets.
I told the department heads we'd go through the capital items one by one again, if y'all want to do that.
Just for fun.
Just for fun.
Uh-huh.
We've only done it, what, four times?
Oh, we have more buckets.
That's supposed to be the kind of weather work that you just had a prediction? It's like a snowstorm with a train coming through.
So, this is what you're working through.
Yes. So, this is the presentation of our twenty-nineteen budget. Y'all have seen, in painful detail, I believe, the personnel request and the capital request, so today, we're going to talk more big picture. Do you want to actually push F-five so it's playing, or, Alisa, do you want to start it? Hit F-five so it's playing.
Get a movie? Two, two. Oh, it's the Buckets, yay, that was one of my favorites.
Are you just going to flip through it that way, or do you want to actually play it?
It helps you, it makes it easy to understand.
I'll be asking, I'll go to the...
Okay, so, if you go to the next slide, I look back at last year's presentation. So, last year, when we talked about the twenty-eighteen budget, which really hasn't been a full year ago, we talked about financial health by the year twenty-twenty. If you'll push your arrow one time, okay. So, financial health by the year twenty-twenty, and this is year two of our... one time, okay. So, financial health by the year 2020, and this is year two of our quote, unquote, plan. So, in 2018's budget, we did the fiscal year change. We did our first aggressive round of rate increases for water, sewer, sanitation, solid waste. Again, that 2020 mark is when our bond payment increases by almost half a million dollars. So, we're having to do some aggressive changes right now, so that we can be ready for that. Also, as I typically present on my monthly update, we were seeing negative operating cash for water and sewer and sanitation, solid waste. Now, water and sewer has improved, but sanitation, solid waste is still in the red on that part. We're also trying to make our reserves healthy in those funds. So, that, there's a bigger picture behind what we're trying to do here. Okay, moving on. Wanted to refresh everybody on the buckets. These are our five main buckets right now. In governmental accounting, we have to account for things separately. And it's based on what the source and the intended use for the funds are. So, general fund, that's what we pay for our government. That's funded by taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, and that's used to pay for governmental things. Our police, our recreation, our general government. Our fund, as we were just speaking about, is healthy. We have a good amount in our fund balance, and our cash is good there. So, our general fund bucket is not leaking. We're doing good. Our water bucket is leaking slightly. You can see that there. We were in need of about 20% rate increases based on our initial rate study there. So, we were losing money in the water system, but not as bad as our sewer system. We'll look at that next. Very unhealthy. Because of the bond payments, we were having to subsidize that pretty much completely, or at least half, at least either general fund or our SLOSS fund at one point we've used for debt payments. So, that, the sewer portion of our enterprise fund was really a big drain. You can see the bucket leaking out there. Sanitation, again, a small leak. Waste Industries was passing on annual CPI increases to us based on market, and we were not passing those on to customers. So, we've been correcting that these past couple of years. And then, solid waste, losing big money, well, losing money substantially in that area, but we're talking much smaller dollars in sewer. So, there's our buckets. Go on to the next slide, please. All right. So, major 2019 major changes. If you'll go on to the next slide. We have mentioned this before, but the budget does reflect the reorg that we have talked about. First one being the creation of the utility director position. So, right now, Pete is over Public Works, which includes the plants, which includes distribution, collection, street, stormwater, and he's pulled in many directions. And we've created this utility director position to focus him more on water and sewer. So, this position will oversee water plant, the two wastewater plants, distribution and collection. Also, with this reorg, we would move the city engineer to become the public works director, who would be over street, solid waste and stormwater. And then, he would have a deputy public works director, which would oversee maintenance. So, that's building and fleet, grounds maintenance, and as well as our custodians that we now have on staff. Pine Mountain is also going to be moved, and that'll be under tourism, which is part of our economic development, Main Street Tourism Department. Next slide shows you just a diagram of what that will look like now. You can see the different department heads. The ones in yellow are the ones that will change. Okay. Next slide. Harping back on the enterprise funds, looking back at the budget. So, these are what we want our buckets to look like for our water, sewer, sanitation and solid waste funds. We want them to be self-sufficient without any holes in them, and without having the general fund having to subsidize. They should be self-sufficient. So, if you'll go to the next slide, Alyssa. So, this budget has no general fund subsidies to either of those two funds. This is our second year to do that for Water and Sewer Fund. This, in our 2018 budget, we did not subsidize from the general fund, but we also budgeted a $700,000 loss in our water sewer fund. Our sanitation, solid waste fund, this will be, this 2019 budget, will be the first year that we are not subsidizing that as well. Just to kind of make everyone aware what that would equate to if we did subsidize for the bond payment. That would require a three mil increase on our property tax rate if we wanted to pay for the bond payment through property taxes. So, that's the kind of increase that would require, to go back to that. Okay? So, what this budget does include are, again, we need to be aggressive with our rate increases this year, trying to get ready for our 2020 half a million dollar bond rate, a bond payment increase. So, this budget reflects a 5% water increase and a 30% sewer increase. So, the base will not change. This is only on the volumetric portion. So, if you are a small user, you will not feel as big of an increase as someone who is a larger water sewer consumer. So, it's volumetric. The bigger users are going to see a bigger increase, if that makes sense.
So, we're not recommending a base increase?
Correct. The base will stay the same.
Did we increase the base this year?
We were able to keep that the same this year as well. So, we're trying to put it more on the users. If you're a heavy user, then you pay more towards the system than a smaller user.
Right. So, the theory of that is, that's your seniors, right? Your seniors are your lightest users typically. And a big component of their bill has stayed the same, right? So, the only way they get hit more substantially is that they're using a lot of water, which shouldn't go together, right?
So, this, these numbers, these percentage increases are based on not the base rate, but the volume rate?
Correct.
That's an important distinction.
Okay. Next slide. This budget includes a $2 rate increase for sanitation, but no increase for solid waste. The solid waste fee will stay at 750. However, we plan to bring you some changes that will limit the amount that can be picked up and included as part of that 750 monthly, monthly fee, if they are wanting us to pick up more than a certain amount. And Bobby knows more about that. If they have a larger pickup, then we would require an additional fee to help.
We're not doing that yet.
No.
We're going to propose that during the call.
So, this rate increase, this will actually, our fund, this fund will break even this year, is what's budgeted, which is great news. Okay, next slide.
Real quick, just on the solid waste, I thought we were going to receive from Bobby some proposals. When is that happening? Okay.
The only thing that we're really excluding right now from that kind of pickup is abictions. And maybe, we don't do everyday tire pickup either. So, I mean, there's some like specialty things we don't pick up, but I mean, we're picking up just about everything people put out there.
All right. Y'all saw this format last year, but this is an estimate of what someone's bill would change. So, if someone uses 45,000, 45, excuse me, 4,500 gallons, their current bill is 91.68 for everything, water, sewer, sanitation, solid waste. So, if they don't have sewer service, that part would not be in here. But, this is somebody who has all four services. Their bill would increase $12.16. So, if you look to the far right, you can see the water increase is minimal, 84 cent change. Again, the sewer, if you remember back to the bucket, sewer is where we're losing money profusely. So, that's where the bigger increase is. So, that would be a $9.32 increase. Sanitation is a $2 increase, and no increase there on solid waste. And if you look at the next-
Are we going to renew, are we going to look at that contract too?
Yes. Sanitation.
I think that's like April 1 or something like that. Is that right?
Yes, but we need to start.
But, don't we have to start way ahead of time, because you have to give a whole bunch of notice, a certain amount?
90 days. Okay. The next one is the senior. So, those who do qualify for the senior discount, their bill would go up $8.14.
How many seniors do we have now? How many senior discounts?
Last checked, it was, I think it was just under 200, but I can get you that number. I'm sorry?
It was about 300 before.
Yeah, it was.
350.
Yeah.
That qualified? Well, it was 38% of 600, so it wouldn't be 300. Y'all are looking at me. I'll get that number.
Hey, you stop putting it on your little chart.
Okay. All right. Moving on. So, now, we can talk numbers. All right, our total city budget is just under $30 million. 29 million, 29.6 million. Obviously, the large part of that is the general fund, then our water sewer fund. And you can see that we also have the sanitation, solid waste fund, the SLOSS fund. And this year, we're budgeting our self-funded insurance, debt service, hotel, other. So, we're right about $30 million. If you go to the next slide, this is our general fund budget. So, our general fund budget is $13.3 million.
Let me make sure I understand this, because the projected 2018 budget, 133% to get it up to 12 months, was like 26 and a half million. Is that correct? So, we're going up 3.2 million?
Yes, because you added self, the self-funded insurance fund, which is like a million.
Correct.
Three all by itself, or something.
Yes. So, yes, we did increase revenues by, what was it, 12%?
You didn't have SLOSS in the budget last time?
Right. So, some of that was, is the Douglas County SLOSS. We didn't have that in there last year. 1.3 million of it is self-funded insurance. So-
Hotel motel's gone up.
Hotel motel's gone up. We're also doing another water sewer rate increase. So, those are all-
Sanitation's going up.
Significant revenue increases. So, if you look at this screen, our general fund, 13.3 million. So, we do get almost $10 million in taxes, and that's what I've broken down here on the side, so you can see what portion is what. We get 3.6 million in property taxes, 2 and a half million in sales tax. We do get 1.2 million in franchise tax, which is from the electric companies and the telephone, cable. We also get almost a million dollars in our insurance tax, and then we have a few other smaller items for 1.4 million.
What kind of stuff is out there?
That includes like the business property tax, or, excuse me, the business tax. Let me think.
A little bit of interest income.
Well, that's other taxes. So, I'm trying to picture my screen.
What about the allocations?
Not there. I can get back to you more on what the other is. So, we do have transfers in, what Tom's referring to. That last revenue line item transfers in, 1.3 million dollars. I know I've mentioned this in the past, but the water, sewer, sanitation, solid waste funds, our enterprise funds contribute to the general fund for all the expenses that they would have if they were a standalone utility. For instance, having HR or finance, IT, a maintenance department, custodians, those kinds of things that they would have if they stood alone. So, we just do a transfer back to the general fund to help pay for those. And then, you can see down at the bottom, those are all the uses of our funds. So, administration, that includes like our city manager, city clerk, finance, HR, our legal, IT, those sort of things. And then, the rest of them are pretty much broken down by department. All right. Can look at the next slide. This is our enterprise funds. So, our water sewer budget is 8.4 million, and our sanitation, solid waste is 1.3 million. So, now, we're finally, if you look at the chart, you can see sewer revenue is finally coming in higher than water, which is what we would expect, because our sewer expenses are much higher considering the bond payments and things. Here, it shows debt service at only $115,000, because we actually budget for the bond payment. The bond itself has its own fund. So, the 1.7 million of our debt service is included in the transfers out, because we're moving that to the separate fund. But, it's in there. But, you can see both of these funds, both of our two, what were problem children, we are not budgeting losses this year. So, that is thanks to our additional rate increases. Okay. The next page. We have talked about all the capital projects at length in our previous meetings. So, to summarize those, we have $3.5 million in our capital projects this year, and these are how they're being paid for. So, majority is SLOSS. The two largest pieces of the pie are the Carroll County and the Douglas County SLOSS. We do have a little bit this year in our general fund budget. We haven't been able to afford capital from our general fund budget in the past couple of years. And we are starting to also pay for some with water sewer. In the time that I've been here, we've mostly paid for all capital with SLOSS. So, we're starting to make these funds healthier, where we can start paying for some of these capital projects with the actual operating budgets.
Let me ask you a question right here, Sarah. This does not take into account the possibility of the Carroll County T-SLOSS?
That is correct. I created the fund, and you'll see the fund in your book, but it's zero. But, now, I know I might need to budget $100 here and there. I did not budget any money, because that will need, our November ballot will determine that.
So, I had mentioned this in one of the first meetings we had on our budget. So, what, you know, should that pass in November, then that will have an impact on some of our funds. Five-
500 grand.
$500,000. So, I don't want to see us increase our budget by $500,000.
Right.
That would go into our funds balance, wouldn't it?
Well, not necessarily.
Yes. So, some of the projects-
That's what I'm saying.
Some of the projects that are listed, you don't see the detail, but some of the projects that are included in our Carroll County SLOSS, well, no, excuse me. We took some of our projects out that we couldn't afford this year in anticipation of getting the SLOSS, or the T-SLOSS. So, some of our SLOSS money is paying for road projects that would then be paid for by the transportation SLOSS. That would free up some of our Carroll County SLOSS to pay for some of these other projects.
Good.
Okay. Next slide. I've included this detail in your book. I don't know if you want me to go item by item, but these are the changes that were made since our last conversation on July, I think, 11th. So, we've added a gold, the gold miner statue for 21,000. We've added the gold nugget tower over at the mill for 75,000. We have put in the gold dust concession stand and restroom for 150,000. Converting the light poles at the tennis courts, we've added that. The gold dust parking lot and moving the light poles in, we've shown that. We've added a John Deere bunker and field rake for recreation, a Ford F-250 for Public Works. And with that, the truck that's current, that will be replaced actually needs to go to wastewater treatment plant. So, it'll, that'll be a good deal for us. And then, a maintenance truck for our grounds maintenance. We've added, since we put the meter technician back in for half the year, we would need to purchase a truck. So, I've put a truck back in for the meter tech, and then a grapple truck for solid waste. And we had three items that were delayed or moved out. First one is the mirror light connector. We delayed that. The sidearm mower tractor was delayed. And then, the meter replacements, like I said, we delayed that person for six months. So, I've delayed, or I just included only half of the amount that we had talked about for meter replacements.
The gold miner statue, I thought that was a DDA project. I thought that was, this caught me by surprise when I just saw it. Thought that was supposed to be privately funded. Am I missing something?
I think they have raised about half the money. It's about a $50,000 project.
So-
There's no, there's no effort on the part of the community to generate that money anymore. The people that were involved have, I think, run out of gas.
Remember that for the future. Gold dust parking lot and move light poles?
Yes.
You know, we got that in there as a placeholder. What Vicky and I have talked about doing because of not only the interest in additional parking, but the conversation about replacing concession restroom, fixing the sewer line, the playground, the splash pad, the walking trail, is that before we do any of that, we have somebody come in and help us figure out the best place in the park for each of those things, because maybe one of those other things needs to go out there behind the ball field because of the water line or because of the sewer line or whatever, and we need to put the park in somewhere else. We want to decide all that at once, but this is a placeholder for what we're thinking is going to cost to start doing some of that. And then, we've got, what, the playground is in SLOSS, and the splash pad, help me, is in 19, is in 20. So, I mean, we're starting, and we've got concession restroom.
It's in here.
In here. So, we're starting to queue up. We really had a redirection of recreation money from wherever it was before I got here, more to gold dust, is what's happened. The roof, the gutters, the boiler, now concession restroom, which wasn't in there. Now, concession restroom, which wasn't in there, the playground, which was, the splash pad is back. We've still got to decide if we want to do it out there, do it downtown, like Chris has recommended, or do two. So, anyway, so we just needed a place for the money. What we actually spent it on is an argument for later, after we get somebody to help us figure out what the best site is for each of those things at gold dust.
I just hope when they think about that site plan, it's not just best location as to here's where we can fit it, but take on the customer's mindset of a parent being there who's watching their children. You know what I mean? You don't want something stuck behind a building where you can't see what's going on in the field. Do you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
From the customer's standpoint.
I was going to go back to the gold miner statue. I remember when that was presented, and that was going to be funded completely by donations. So, you know, I just, I mean, that's, in the scheme of things, I guess twenty-one thousand dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money, but I know the original intent of that. And y'all correct me, because y'all are up here, I wasn't.
I bought a brick, I don't know how many years ago, with donation.
I don't know if I'm prepared to give up on that idea, to try to come up with that money. I don't know how y'all feel.
That all predates me, so y'all know the people, and I don't, so.
Hasn't that statue already been commissioned?
Yes.
And paid for?
Half.
And was it paid for with donated money?
Yes.
So, is the balance, is this the balance, or is this? Okay.
So, I have no personal investment in this thing, right? Plus, I wasn't here, so if y'all want to put this back on the group that was sort of responsible at the beginning, it's fine with me. That's a personal thing.
Hasn't, so if the contractor hasn't been paid, the city of Villarica ordered this, who ordered it?
It was done through DDA, is my best understanding. That's who was heading it.
I wouldn't bet my house on that, but I think that's true.
I don't like the idea.
And Main Street were like together.
That somehow, we're thinking about not paying for it if we ordered it or endorsed its purchase.
Janet, would you like to, she's motioning like.
You said that predates her.
Well, she was doing this. I don't know if that means let me come up here, or I'm trying to get out the back door quick, so.
And that's fine, and we can't have somebody commissioned to do something for the city, even though it was an entity of ours, separate from our decision. But it also says something about an appointed committee. And I don't mean this to sound as negative, I don't want this to come off as negative as it might sound, who makes a decision to fundraise for something that in the end, the taxpayers pick up the tab. So, that lesson needs to be learned for the future. That's, but I know we can't leave an artist out there not getting paid for something that a city entity.
And we have a brick.
Commissioned them for.
Because we've committed to those people also, and not delivered.
And that was done through who? DDA too? That was done through DDA. So, the city got to pick up tabs on somebody.
I mean, people had good intentions.
Go back to the group and say, hey, but for that to happen is going to involve y'all. It's worth using your poison here, I think.
We already looking bad, so hey, I'm a little hurt.
All right, this next slide shows our personnel. Total city personnel budget is almost ten million dollars, nine point seven million. Of that, seven point three five is salaries, and two point three six is benefits. This, our budget includes nine new FTEs, that's eight full-time and two part-time. And it includes four title changes. You know, our upgrade sheet that we kept looking at had more than that. I'm not counting those now, because that all came back. Some of those ones that we speculated, pay grade changes and things, those all came back with part of our compensation study. So, like I mentioned earlier, this does include the compensation classification study. They've given us the budget numbers we needed, so, like I said, we didn't go the full implementation. We scaled it back one degree, and so this includes six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of increases for all but eight of our employees. Next slide. So, our changes since our last conversation, we removed the purchasing agent. We removed the SRO for Douglas County and the related promotion to the sergeant for the SROs. Those are the only changes to personnel since we last met. So, I have, any questions?
You said you moved the SRO from Douglas County?
We removed.
That was down at the Mirror Lake, so.
Is that a done deal now?
Well, I would point out that I did attempt to contact Trent North again last week and the week before, and left him messages at his office and on his cellphone, and I received no call back. So, it does appear that Douglas County is not interested in having an SRO over at Mirror Lake Elementary School. And I would point out that we do have an SRO at every school in the city limits of Villarica, except Mirror Lake Elementary School.
That's funded by Carroll County.
We have partnership with Carroll County schools. We pay half on every one of these officers, and we've offered and pushed to do the same thing with Douglas County, but at every turn, Douglas County is not interested in participating in putting an officer at Mirror Lake Elementary School.
Ken, did you get that?
And I would hope that we don't get rid of the ones in Carroll County.
No.
In the school system, and I know we need them.
And my mind is checking ahead, yes, also.
That school safety is important. It's important to the city of Villarica. We participate in every school that we have in the city limits. We want to do it in Douglas County, but Douglas County Board of Education, or at least their superintendent, has shown no interest in doing that, and they've been reached out to multiple times. And I see the chief nodding back there, because he has done it as well.
He's almost asleep.
But he's nodding.
He woke up, man.
That's because he's falling asleep.
Any questions? Thank you, Sarah, for your commitment, and everybody for putting that together. Another great budget. We're moving in the right direction. The only question I have about the budget is, I had asked for a traffic study, and I didn't see it anywhere in there, and I looked like three times, so we're just not going to do that. I think that's money well spent.
Bobby and I need to put our heads together. No, he's getting ready to start counting trucks on the hunk now with the counter that we acquired.
Yeah. We need.
I don't have to stand up.
I'd like to at least know how much we're talking about, because, you know, every year that goes by, we're missing a boat. We need to know where we need to be on our tra, we've got a problem with traffic in this city, so.
We have a near insurmountable road grid. What we've evolved into will never be adequate, even for today, and it's only going to get worse.
No, we should be able to know where we need to, how much it's going to cost to get us close. Okay.
You'll have a rapid project coming, right? A not rapid, a rapid, not really rapid project, roundabout?
Quick response.
Oh, quick response, that's.
Okay. She threw me off with all that. It's a quick response, G-DOT program.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's never really quick.
Pete's still working with the guys to get the water line relocation available.
I knew we had, it's us.
We're working on it.
Some utilities.
It's not at the top of the list, but yeah, I mean, it is actually getting worked on. Bobby's working on it with him, surveys. We've used the ground penetrating radar guy out there to help us figure out how to get around the rock and.
That would help one traffic area, but that doesn't give us an overall view, and we do need that.
And look at it on the bright side, if we get the T-splosts passed.
But that's even more reason we need those.
Revenue and.
Right, right. Okay, Tab H, public comment. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Hello, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Mecklen. My name is Cheryl Bell. I live at two twenty-five Raleigh Way in Villarica. I wanted to just comment on the master trail plan. I think it's a good thing for our city, and I'm glad that we're starting to work on it. And I'm just going to ask that as you adopt it, I hope that's what you do Tuesday, that you consider allowing golf carts on the trail. And I know I brought this up in the work sessions, because you have to consider older people and motorized, even in motorized wheelchairs. Peachtree City has, even though they're authorized for non-motorized users, which is what our plan says too, they do say that golf carts are welcome. And I don't think they're that big of a percentage of the traffic on those, and I don't think I've seen that many in Mirror Lake as a whole. But just consider it, because just think how far of, so many seniors that can't bicycle or walk, or maybe connect a senior from Mirror Lake to Tanner Hospital, and they can use their golf cart instead of driving. You know, it just may be helpful. It may be come down to where they may use it or not. People may use it or not use it, you know, depends on how far you can walk or bicycle. Also, I had in my notes, you were talking about waste pickup. I had in my notes back in February that we had not had our spring cleanup day where everything's picked up, I think, or you were proposing that and a August thirteenth hazardous waste day. I know that was mentioned in February eighteenth, and I haven't seen any kind of signage or anything for it. So, it was supposed to be on August thirteenth, and it said it was a hazardous waste day. And I don't know what the, it was designated, August thirteenth was supposed to be designated for that. That's all the comments that I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Our council member Marchman was about to speak in public comment.
I do need to ask Marchman, though.
Okay.
I got one to ask.
Since they have, well, since you got a sign up that says coming soon, why don't they take that sign down, that welcome center sign down?
Amen.
It looks ugly, and you're saying coming soon, and it's still sitting there, so.
Well, that, this is good and it works. Coming soon could mean a lot of things.
But now, you're saying it's putting off, or you're not going to do it, so that's not coming soon.
I have a proposal for that, but I was waiting for the, I was waiting for the update from, is it Keckenwood or whatever money we spent for engineering?
I've gotten information back from Keckenwood about doing Plan B, which was the dirt road, Peachtree Place thing, and it's not practical. So, I've shifted my research to the north side of the tracks, but it's very difficult also. So, from my perspective, if we do something now, it's because of what you just saw before the meeting. So, did you look at the west end of the plan? Right, so that's a whole nother round of conversation that we need to have when we get through with the budget.
So, can we maybe get some things back on track, then?
Did y'all like what you saw today?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think you're telling them back on track with the Welcome Center, right?
Well, that.
Yeah, I think that once we agree on what Ron's proposing.
Visioning those other projects we want.
To agree publicly, I'm not standing in the way of the Welcome Center being.
Yeah, I have another suggestion, too, based on what I'm seeing from Ron. I really like what Ron's producing.
I do, too.
I think he's gotten reacquainted with Villarica, because he has a lot of history here, and he's proposing some things that we've not considered, and he's able to incorporate the things that we have already said that we won't. So, I like the direction of that. What I would like to propose is, as we go forward, that we no longer use TSW to help us with the utilization of land along Mirror Lake Connector, but we use Ron instead, and just have him pick up at the northeast corner of that draw, and then just go up to Shoreline.
Is TSW?
TSW is who we hired in the fall.
Was that the Woodstock connection?
That's the Woodstock guy. But after seeing the two, Ron fits us.
I agree.
I don't disagree with what I saw a while ago, but I think the first thing we need to do is get in touch with the big boys out here in front of us and see if something can be done. Because if we can be, we can talk all we want to, but if they don't let us do that.
Well, it's a combination of smoothing them and chastising them in the media. We're trying to find.
I mean, we're getting, the first time I ever remember Norfolk Southern giving the city money. That's happening next Tuesday night. So, I'd say that was a step in the right direction.
I take it back. I take it back. There is another, it's one other time.
Well, we had to give something up to get it, though.
Yes, yes.
We're not having to give anything up, just so y'all know.
Right.
Yeah, if we're successful in getting something done downtown in full cooperation with G-DOT and Norfolk Southern, we will have really done something.
You set a mouthful.
But do not expect me to do that quickly. If at all, I mean, don't expect it to even happen, but if it can happen, it would be wonderful. But it will be very difficult. It is very difficult. I mean, we're trying now, and it's very difficult.
One more thing I got to say, I'll be sorry. Tuesday night is the, or Tuesday is the, you know, that's only meeting that I miss during the year. I'll be in Dallas, Texas for our national convention.
We will miss you.
Somebody suggested I do the call-in, but I'll be in a meeting.
I don't know who to address this question to. Was it him, you, or you? Does he have a contract signed?
My understanding is yes.
Have you signed it, Mayor?
Not unless I signed it that night, if you put it in front of me.
Well, we'll take care of that by Tuesday, then. It seems like there's some miscommunication on that.
This is all your fault. You need to let us know these things.
Either that or spam or something, somebody's got something.
Does he even have an authority?
No.
Tom, so you're technically not our city manager, right?
So, we got another one.
Well, that's right, he's working without a contract.
Stephanie's already told me that she didn't put the pay increase in there this last time. That was more than all of us.
Somebody better look at the chief and tell him you're making this up, because he could get worried.
I think he's texting somebody now.
I think he's asleep.
Ken's making notes, just so y'all know. Okay. Anything else before we talk about the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to check out, but I will see you Tuesday.
Hope you enjoyed your vacation. I understand you did. Good to have you back.
It's going to be a short consent agenda. Let's go.
Yep, let's go. All right, we got four presentations. We got to talk about the minutes. We'll have to talk about the times and dates for the council meetings. The lease agreement with Gas and Outdoor Advertising, we'll have to talk about that, because Tom's going to.
Right.
Okay, requests for temporary signage.
That's a C.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Did you say no, Gil?
I haven't said anything.
Okay. Tab D is tabled. Tab E one.
In your service renewal, we can do that consent.
Consent.
Okay. F one.
Consent.
Did Nick present that?
Yes.
It's just all the surplus items that.
Tanks and stuff like that.
Aircraft carriers and stuff.
I know, I thought he was still sitting here. I was going to say he needed to present it again Tuesday night. Go ahead.
Okay, number two, emergency replacement for gear reducer.
Well, I need more information about that. I think maybe a fifteen or twenty-minute dissertation, but otherwise, let's put it on consent agenda.
Did y'all hear anybody say anything? I didn't say consent agenda, right? G one, financial update. We got to do budget amendments. Budget amendments.
Consent.
Okay. Budget amendments two thousand and eighteen.
I mean, you ain't going to be.
That's consent, it's all house. That's, that's consent, it's all housekeeping.
We've got to talk about the millage rate. Item number five, presentation of the budget. So the items that I have on consent agenda are item C2, E1, F1, F2, and G2 and G3. Is that what everybody else has?
Yep.
Alright, see y'all sooner.
Or later.
You should say later, but it always end up, I end up saying everybody, right?